We've just got bigger fish to fry, so we pulled those out. They are still around if um developers want to use them in their communities.
Those guidelines.
And those are pretty standard nationwide type of guidelines.
Yeah, they were a cut and paste.
They were a cut and paste. So that's where we're at. Um, quick note on the subdivision ordinance and why it's flying in so hot. There was legislation passed in twenty twenty-three that I was unaware of. Um, that That was before my time. That said, we have to make these this uh these changes to our subdivision. Most of the subdivision chapter, Lloyd, I hope you don't have much to do with it. Um, most of the subdivision chapter is pretty mandated by the state of Utah requirements at this point in time. We had to totally rewrite it last week. Um, the reason why we have to push the subdivision chapter through on December thirtieth is um a lot of counties and cities have not gotten it in place. And the state has flexed their will and said that they will pull our transportation funding for next year if we do not have it in place by December thirty-first.
Grand County.
So we'll have a question about that. So so Claudema is really clear that if there's a change to a land use ordinance, especially a big one, there needs to be a public hearing before the planning commission. It it's it's says that, so how does that jive with?
The subdivision ordinance?
Yeah, because it's
Public hearing that day. We're having two public hearings that day. Before we vote. And that's why this postcard went out. So everybody has a postcard ten, at least ten days in advance. Um, they hit mailbox this Friday.
So we're going to have a public hearing before we vote?
So at that meeting, there will be a public hearing at the beginning of that meeting.
Okay.
Um, and then there'll be another public hearing the same day uh with the county board of commissioners before they vote on it.
Okay, good.
The one thing I will say about this. We need this to happen. And if we want changes, we literally revote on it on January ninth. So um but we need, I can't stress enough, we need to have the new subdivision ordinance in place the thirtieth. If there's some major things we want to look at that we can change um ten days later, we're revoting on it basically. Um, so just know that there's some politics in the mix on that one.
So did we get the subdivision ordinance?
Yes. It's chapter six. So that's all I have for big ideas. Um, I have some things that I really need to cover. And so I'd like to do those first and then we'll dive into the comments from Melissa. And then we'll dive into any other comments um that people have along the way. So the first thing I'd like to look at is in the subdivision ordinance, I just wanna show it to you. And hopefully if, so I tried to set this up so that links work in a PDF format. So you should have this jump to table of contents on every page. Um, and all of these links should go to the chapter. If you find a broken link, you just email it to me. I I think we're good, but just double check it. Um, so again, subdivisions was rewritten as per the state mandate. Uh, we do not have a ton of flexibility on this chapter at this point in time. Um, the the biggest changes are that they're taking planning commission and county commission out of the approval process. Um, the reason for this legislation is you have a lot of developers at the state. And they want things very streamlined. And so um as the planning administrator, they are uh putting me in place as the land use authority. And so we will run subdivisions through staff only. Um, this will, there's pros and cons to it. I really like having a seven-person vote behind our decisions, but um they're going a different direction with this with the state. So it will still go through our staff. It goes through health department roads, uh surveyors, recorders, the attorneys. It still goes through the same process we have in place now already. We just take out the planning commission approval and the county commission's approval. Now, I will say this is also topped out at ten, I believe it's ten lots, which is where you would get kicked over to planned unit development. Um, s- you can appeal if you don't like the decision for subdivision that administrative staff has done. You can appeal that. Um, if you're an affected party. And I saw your note on affected parties. Um, and so there's still those kind of checkpoints in place, checks and balances. Yes.
How would uh the public know that something is coming?
So we We mail uh we mail adjacent owners. Um, so if it's just a raw parcel of land, we we mail the adjacent property owners touching that. If it's a subdivision and they're splitting, um we'll have to mail everybody in that subdivision. And that that one's kind of a pain in the butt. Um, and so they will get a mailed notice.
But that hasn't happened yet.
No.
That hasn't been
It has happened a few times. But eh I'll be honest, it has not been consistent.
So if that piece is missing though, on the county's end.
Well, this where this comes in because we're taking planning commission out of it. Um, those mailers and notice will take a lot more um. And you are correct, we have been uh out of compliance a few times. I'll just be straight up. So this is something only the last few months we've started to do. Since I it's been on my radar.
But you could either do the mailers or a public hearing. You did not have to do both.
Correct. And there's there's, we would like to get away from public hearings as much as possible. Unless a planning commissioner calls for a public hearing, then we will hold one. Um, but our old subdivision was like you need to have a public hearing every time.
Right.
And for these simple lot splits, it doesn't make sense. Um, and so that might be at a little more of a discrepancy between myself or if you get comments, hey, you know, this is too many lots and would like a public hearing, but you know, it is going to be on my judgment of like, is a public hearing probably a good idea on this one or not?
I would like to have that as, you know, how we have our building permit list. You know, when
Subdivisions? Okay, that's easy.
Okay.
We only get, so I had a huge mess to clean up when I came on. I had like twenty subdivisions from three years ago. Um, we only get maybe a subdivision a month. And that's even simple lot splits.
Right now.
Like, right now. Um, so I it's not a huge factor in our lives. But i- it's around. So I think doing something like, hey, here's the subdivisions this month, just as an informative uh would be good.
So so does that mean for subdivisions, you are the land use authority? Okay, so that's gotta be clear in this ordinance. Because in the ordinance, it calls the planning commission the land use authority. In the proposed ordinance.
It is in the subdivision ordinance. It does.
The planning administrator.
Yep.
See, the I think it's right here.
But up but in the definitions. It says the planning commission.
Okay.
You know, that's just not surprising that our state legislators wanna streamline everything for them.
Um, the other thing in the definitions, which I'm not doing right now. We need to go through and just get rid of anything that is common term. But I'm like, it's there, it's fine, just leave it. Um, but we need to just whittle that down at some point later.
I think it should
Well, no, hold on. This says the planning commission may be
Yep.
The land use authority.
Right.
So we need to leave that.
You, yeah, um but I think under planning administrator, it needs to say the planning administrator may be land use authority for subdivisions. We're gonna use that language.
Doesn't sound like maybe is, it sounds like is.
Yes, right.
Well, in legal legal term, may, we need we need to leave that sentence in there. That that you may be a ca- called upon for the land use authority, because that is when you make a legislative decision, you are the land use authority. Um, so I have in chapter six. I think that's it. We've just got one little thing to clean up on an image.
So like, does this, I'm just reading this, cuz I I didn't read it till I got here. So just on the review cycle limits and timeline. So is that basically saying you have eighty days?
So this is also new, um they put this in to streamline it as well. So we can only review it four times before we either accept it or deny it. The reason why this was put in is that we're we're not getting the corrections that we need. And this was also mandated from the state, the four-cycle review. Um, it helps us a lot with one surveyor in particular that just keeps kicking back inaccurate information. And is just wasting our staff's time. We're like, if you cannot get it right in four reviews, we're just denying it. And you can start over. Um, and so that actually helps us a lot in a current situation. Um, our review has to be done within twenty days.
Alright, I'm just saying it kinda put puts you on the clock as well.
It does, and that is hard for us. We right now only meet once a month. And so this means that we're gonna have to be streamlining it consistently. Um, we have some workflow software that's coming on board here shortly. That will hopefully just consistently all the time be pushing subdivisions forward instead of having this once a month meeting where we all sit down and talk about it together. Cuz that twenty business days is gonna be a crunch for us.
So is Anderson Oliver happy with the subdivision?
So most of their, most of their concerns are under the application submissions. So this is basically our checklist, that's section seven. As a checklist, make sure they have title report, make sure they own it, or um we get like a mortgage leasing to sign off on it. Um, if there's any CCNRs and the rest of it. This is pretty standard, pretty standard stuff. Again, um in the past, I don't think we've upheld this very well. And we're we're going to be upholding it more, where an application won't even be processed until they have the full checklist. Um, I'll be honest, right now I have people just send me a plat. And they're like, okay, I'm ready. And like, there's a whole package. You can't just send me the plat. Like, I have no fee, I have no application. And so um we really need to make sure that they're sending us a full, full set of documents to keep them out of trouble and to keep us out of trouble. And honestly, the preliminary requirements are the final requirements. Um, you know, they have to have a full application ready to go for us to even start looking at it. You know, improvement plans are something we haven't done a lot of, but we need to, cuz we're getting in trouble with like people who start a subdivision and then ditch it, and then we've gotta go fix the road or you know, finish what they didn't. Um, development agreements are gonna be important.
Since when?
That won't go fix it? Since they don't pay the taxes on it and then we inherit it as an abandoned property.
We'll fix the road.
We can only do so much budget cuts.
Budget cuts.
But no, that is that is one loophole right now. Maybe I shouldn't say this cuz Todd will kill me, but right now they put the road on a separate parcel of their development and then don't pay the taxes on it. It goes rogue and the county gets the road. And so now we own the development's road that they were supposed to put in.
That is genius.
It's a loophole. It's not nice.
It's genius. I'm gonna write a note too. Back back taxes. The county gets the road.
You know, no one's gonna buy a road, unfortunately.
Oh, but we sure get taxed.
Um, the other thing with this, we've had a lot of problems with people holding on to them for years and years and years. Once you get our signatures, you get your final mailer, you got thirty days. There's no hold on to it for five years and then coming in and record it. So
Thirty days to record?
Yep. So it's like, here it is. And the other thing we're doing is they are not leaving this building. They will go from my office to the recorder's vault. But we've sent plaits out and they are gone. And I do not know where they are and their final signature mailers. So we are, we are discontinuing the practice of handing them back to the owner. They go from department to department and the owner can come in and record it.
I think my last one was here for almost a year and a half before I got it.
Yeah, yours was one of the backlog ones.
Then I only had thirty days to get it recorded.
Any other heart heartburn on subdivisions? Okay. Okay, so that one will go to vote on December thirtieth. It's a extra special meeting at nine AM for us, public hearing beforehand.
Extra special.
Extra special.
So if this is pretty much how the state is requiring counties to um write their subdivision ordinance, then and we're the last county in the whole state to finally approve one.
Uh, no, there's a lot that haven't started yet, so
Grand County.
So they are, I mean, but I mean, I guess my question is, the other counties that are in compliance, how does it actually play out?
Because you you are gonna be swamped. Everybody who's has a hand in approving the subdivision process is gonna, every attorney, every survey, every, you know, it just seems
So we've known about it since twenty-three. Um, they only like recently came in with the heavy hand. So we thought, eh, we're close enough. We're getting it past January ninth. And the twenty-first, that's close enough. And the state of Utah went, we will pull your funding.
Well, I know it's gotta be passed, but I I'm just saying, what does it actually look like in practice? Like, based on other counties?
In practice, if the counties and cities that do not get this in place, they will not get their transportation funds.
No, I mean, that have it in place already and are using their subdivision ordinance.
Nothing, it's fine.
It's fine, cuz
Yeah.
You know, right now, at once a month meeting, it seems to be really slow and that's taking, that's going away. So it could be every day, seven a day.
It won't, it won't be meeting every day. It'll be streamlined in a workflow application where people log in. You know, it dings in your email, hey, you need to review this. And it will be on each individual staff. I think it's been really healthy to have our team meet once a month. There's been a lot of organic conversations come up of how to fix things in a broad spectrum. So we'll probably still meet quarterly, but the workflows should take care of the process of getting a subdivision passed forward.
Okay.
And everybody has their own checklist. You know, fires looking for these things, health departments looking for these things. Um, I'm more or less kind of the coordinator of all those people. Um, I have my checklist too, what we're looking at in zoning and and lot regulations. But for the most part, I'm I'm the manager of making sure the subdivisions getting pushed along. Okay, next one. Page sixty-seven. Um, this was talking about ADUs. And we did double check and we are okay to allow ADUs um as we have it written. So we have that you can have one accessory dwelling unit uh per lot. The reason why they're not permitted in highways, commercial or industrial is because we do not allow a primary residence there. Um, so this does have to be accessory to a main dwelling. Um, so I think that's good. Again, this is promoting more attainable housing options um in areas where it's allowed and ADU would be allowed as a short-term rental though. So we're kind of opening up both sides of attainable housing and the short-term rental market with this um by allowing one per per lot. Um, personally, I think it's a pretty good idea to try to get more housing available. Um, so in residential zones, this could mean a lot of apartments out back, but they would be used for long-term rentals only as we have it written. Questions on ADUs?
But you can have an ADU um under a conditional use with a nightly rental.
Correct. So you can use your ADU as a short-term rental if it's allowed in that zone.
Yes.
And they're and they're allowed in all but residential. I mean, like A conditional use would be.
Uh, not in highway commercial.
Well, highway commercial, yeah.
Industrial or residential.
Industrial or residential.
So but you can do an ADU in residential. So basically what I see here is any ADU in residential is gonna be long-term.
Yep.
And everything else is probably gonna go short-term rental.
Could.
Could, unless somebody has some kindness in their heart to do long-term rentals with the apartment out back.
So I had a question about that while we're on that subject. Um, I thought we were told that we cannot stop all-night rentals in residential zones.
False. We couldn't find it anywhere.
But we went to a percentage.
Yeah.
We we took it out of this entirely. So we said no short-term rentals in residential. You know, our compromise to that is we've opened up a lot of multi-use area. But we would like to keep residential sacred.
I think that's unfair to people in in residential.
I I don't care, actually. I think it's fine, but I I just wonder how come we just, like, we went over that.
Yeah.
And over it and it was a percentage.
Yeah.
Now it's not, which is fine. I I've just kinda
I don't know where
Where were we getting that from?
I don't know. We couldn't find it.
Going over Spanish Valley and like, well, we had to have so many.
I think we were cutting and pacing, cuz that was in the original. I think it was cut and paste from another city or something. But we could not find it in state code and did a lot of homework on this too. Our our main state attorney couldn't find it.
Yeah, I was thinking somebody said let's let's pass something.
I I do think we need a zone that is sacred residential.
And there's very, there's very little.
There's so little residential.
Really.
I mean, that's that's been our our caveat to it is so much of it is multi-use. Um, you know
Know where I'm looking.
Monticello City does, that's LaSalle. Monticello City does theirs is more complicated where they'll allow for it, but it can't be within like two thousand feet of a school or church or what or and I'm like, that's just very complicated. Um
Well, I I like the way Bluff does it. It makes sense to me that they opened it up.
Bluff has a moratorium on it.
There was a moratorium. They opened it up and so they made it possible. People signed up for it. They closed it. When there's enough capacity again, they're gonna reopen it.
We're over capacity right now.
I just think that anybody who, anybody who's in residential right now who might have a a short-term rental you know, all over their street and doesn't have that same option. I I just don't think it's there.
Assessment in Spanish Valley came back eighty percent of housing stock is short-term rental.
I still think it's unfair to the person who's
Yeah, I'm 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 with Melissa there just because it comes back at that. Well, if you had it all available for long-term, doesn't mean you could fill it long-term. I mean
I think we need to have somewhere where we force this comes up in every community, anything you've done is what is the county doing for attainable housing? If we open it up in residential, there will be no caveat for people to do long-term rentals.
So That's that's not necessarily true. That's not.
The county could do stuff like incentives for people to do long-term rentals. I mean, there are different ways to do it, but you can't just have 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 it all around you, but you can't do it now.
Well, we don't have the money to give incentives.
Well, but there are other kinds of incentives.
Well, we've talked about tax write-offs. We can't do that. We've talked about infrastructure grants. We're not, we don't have anything and so
Well, there is. There's about two thousand dollars a year.
Woo, for long-term.
Yeah.
What?
And that's through your property tax. We pay an extra two thousand dollars a year on a property tax.
For sure. Yeah.
Because they're a a second home.
So where we do not build and we are trying to find a way where we literally like force contractors, developers into please build some attainable housing. Long-term in residential means that some it's not coming and going every night. That they're there, they're a neighbor, you know, the kids know them, blah, blah, blah. And it is one spot where somebody can make some extra money by having the apartment out back. But it is available for long-term and not short-term.
Didn't didn't we, didn't we recently just approve an entire new subdivision and gave them overnight rentals for all their units?
So nobody's achieved chapter ten. There's Balance Rock.
Yeah, but there was another one. Balance Rock was before.
Valley Estates.
Yeah, that
Sheepfond.
But um we're working through how those would be vested.
No.
Because no one has signed a development agreement. We're not sure where their vestiture is at, and that will be a one-by-one situation.
And as of January, that all goes away anyway. With this new ordinance, we'll kick all that out.
Not, not necessarily.
But yes, if we voted for somebody to, I mean, at that point
So like Balance Rock has been tied up in litigation now for a while. So their vestiture is prior to this ordinance.
Permissible use in the uh zone that we put them in.
But their vestiture would be on the old ordinance, which has nothing to do with short-term rentals.
Why would you wanna stick with the old zoning when it's permissible use in the new ordinance?
Right.
They're in mixed use.
Well, they're gonna come in as a planned unit development, which plays by different rules.
Right.
Too. Um, so that one is gonna be a one-off situation that we're continuously working through of if they're vested or not, how they're vested. As far as I know, they haven't actually purchased the property yet and there isn't a development agreement signed. And so that development agreement is your staple of vestiture. And no one has signed a development agreement with us.
About the one that's right next to it that they've got.
Valley Estates.
Is that the one we heard?
In December.
Yeah, yeah. The idea that they could put in this new subdivision.
Agreement.
Yeah, but
So everyone did s- step one. So the current ordinance now, everyone did step one. I want the overnight accommodations overlay.
Yeah.
But that's a three-step process. So everyone did step one and no one has done step two or three.
No, we did one all the way through. It was uh TNT.
Oh, Terrence's place?
Yep, Terrence and Steve Harvard next door. That was the only one that we've went all the way through with.
So those are gonna be one-off situations that I'm not sure if they're best, like Valley Estates, I don't think it's gonna be vested for overnight rentals. Balance Rock may be because they've been in this lawsuit for so long and working.
Even though Valley Estates has probably got at least three quarters of a million into that right now.
And infrastructure. We we still have a development agreement.
Still vested though.
So that's, those are gonna be one-off, those are gonna be one-off situations where the legal team's gonna have to look at it, determine vestiture and what counts and what doesn't. But you are correct, a lot of our residential in Spanish Valley is already eaten up by short-term rentals potentially.
So when I brought this up, I went to argue about it. It was just, I was just curious on where that had went, that we'd heard about. I'm one hundred percent behind keeping it out of the residential zones. But I was just wondering where that But I was just wondering where that went cuz we we talked about this six, eight months ago. And it was brought to us that we had to have a percentage in a residential subdivision. We just had to pick the percentage.
We we couldn't find it. So to try to be more in line with our general plan, like we have to have an attainable housing plan in our general plan. That's it. Is that attainable housing is is endorsed in residential zones for long term apartments out back. But it's a tricky, the attainable housing, affordable housing is a big complex cog that we cannot solve with this board.
But.
So I guess, I mean, the the market's gonna saturate itself. At one point or another, these these homes are gonna end up becoming a long term.
Like Spanish Valley is a different thing. Like Blanding though, you can see in Blanding. The number of short term rentals that have come out and gone to long term. Just with the economy, the way things have changed the last eighteen months, you know, there there's a, you know, a few. Additional. I guess my only little thought on it is I'm I'm kinda torn here. Because I still remember the lady that came in.
Mm hmm.
I can't even remember her name, but I talk about her.
On Mount Hill.
You know, and I just hate. The box that she's in, that we aren't capable as a board to be able to. To take that information in that she's correct.
And override that.
And say, you know what I mean? Like she is surrounded by all.
On all sides.
On all sides, but yet because she wasn't doing it, she's taking it in the proverbial short. Because she cannot, you know, sell for the same value. So I guess. I I totally agree that I'm fine with being out of residential, but on the same hand. We have got a hodgepodge going on. And so I would just like to be able to. To make smart, wise decisions as a commission and a board that we can go in and say, hey, this makes sense.
Well, not hodgepodge is a result of people going rogue.
Well, I know, but we.
That's how it. So we're trying to clean it up.
But that's the other issue. Somebody who did it illegally, you know, without permission is gonna continue to be able to do it.
No. So a nonconforming, you have to currently be legal. So and we are going to be hunting those people down. If you're illegally operating.
We still have a list of people that we have to decide if they were nonconforming or if they were just illegal.
So that's part of our follow up this next year is to go in and, you know, do they have. Evidence of being legally operating, of paying the TRT tax of having continuous business. They never pulled their stuff down off of Airbnb.
And I think that's the easiest way to define it is were you paying your um TRT tax?
Well, do they have a bi- a business license?
If you were paying your taxes on it, then yes, you are nonconforming use. If you were not paying your taxes on it, you're out. We didn't have business licenses at the time, so we couldn't enforce it that way. That is the only way you can go back on it, in my opinion.
Yeah.
If you were paying for it, you were paying your dues as a business owner, then yes, it's a nonconforming use. If you did not pay your taxes, you did not do your due diligence as a business owner, no, you're out.
So let's.
You are uh illegal.
Let's look at short term rentals real quick since we're on the subject. Um so a lot of the requirements that we would like to have for that vestiture. All we've said here is that nonconforming means that you were legal before this ordinance. Um a lot of our checklist, they felt would be more appropriate in the business license ordinance. So a lot of those real fine tuned, it's gonna cost this much and there's gonna be yearly inspection, but. That has been kicked to a business license update. Um because because our attorney from the state said, you know, this isn't really a land use issue. This is a business license issue. And so um short term rentals got really simple. On the land use side of things.
Wait, where you going? Go to G if you would. No backup, uh right there. The last sentence in that one. So if we have a short of shortage of housing, are we gonna go back and take away nightly rentals?
We can.
We can.
Do you not like that? Should we take that out?
Not. Business, which we just said and we're classifying it as a business. So I mean, it needs to stay out of the land use. All of a sudden, we have a shortage of housing, so we're gonna take away their right as a business owner. I don't like that sentence.
Okay, so we need to, I agree with you. We need to get rid of. Should we just say as well as negative impacts, period? There's any negative impacts, that would that would fall under our nuisance ordinance.
Yeah, yeah, and that's and that's kinda the way I see it. You know, it's like you look at water use. You get. Trash, waste and water use. Yes, there is a, there's uh anywhere between eighteen and twenty five percent more. With nightly rentals in a in a given month. But I mean, that's hard being in business. It's like any other business. You have the extra uses and things like that.
If we just leave it as well as negative impacts, period, we're covered under the nuisance of if they get reported for whatever. And that's that's the other thing, the nuisance ordinance, a lot of the language was taken out of this if it's repetitive in the nuisance ordinance. So that covers a lot of, a lot of chapters.
Right.
Yeah, I like that. I feel like when it says. Um impacts on housing availability and affordability, it's like how we've already gone past that. It's already driven the prices of cost. So.
Cause they also have the right to not rent it as a short term rental.
Yes, mhm, absolutely. There was another one in there, sorry.
Um, this one is important on F for some of our current pending CUPs. You cannot use tents, recreational vehicles, campers, or similar units as a short term rental. So we do have a couple that are. I think they have a business license that they rent out a camper as a short term rental. They're by the Viscaya. Um and while we might have to uphold that deal. Uh in the future, we do not want people renting out campers. It's just making a mess. I mean, there's literally like a camper behind Chevron in my lab that I'm like, what is happening back here? You guys know the one. You know the one. No, it's like it's a housing unit and there's people.
Grand County sent a letter out stating that you can put camp spots in your backyard to help house people.
So do they work for Chevron?
Who knows? But the only thing I don't get is how they legally did that without contacting Quisette. Stating that you have more impacts and more uses going on if all these single year use.
Mm hmm.
You know, that the county does not work well with Quisette, even though it's part of it. It's weird.
They also catch fire a lot more than a normal house.
So under section three conditions.
It talks about in order to preserve the residential atmosphere of the neighborhood in which it is located. I mean, it it's talking about being residential.
Yeah.
Well, even in like a mul- uh multi-use, we we kind of want that residential fill. So you might have an apartment building or duplexes or quadplexes or. But we we still want that. It's a. It's a a dwelling unit. And that's the thing that's tricky about the short term rentals on inspections. Is and why we need the additional short term rental inspection from the business license department. Which used to be on our list, now it's on their list. When people build a short term rental, even if they know they're building it as a short term rental. They fall under residential building code. It is not a commercial building code. So they are designing it and building it to a residential standard. And then all of a sudden, you throw in this commercial element to it. It changes some things where we need to have those extra uh safeguards in place.
There is a state argument on that from county to county to county.
It's it's messy.
Fire suppression on them.
Mm hmm. Yeah, but you know, the the short term rentals should not have any outside appearance. Indicating a change of use from the surrounding residential uses.
Right.
I mean, it sounds like it's dropped right into a residence, right?
So do you wanna just get rid of re- surrounding?
To be, I want it to be conditional in in residential.
Well, let's have that conversation, I guess. I, from what I have seen, no talk to developers. Um as an a planning administrator, I would recommend that we do not include it in residential. Um and I've kind of already said the reasoning for that for attainable housing and long term housing options. Uh.
Because our residential zones aren't quite small in the county.
And we're looking twenty, thirty years out.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, there's some zones now that have been.
Timing for the folks right now that are in these situations, but eventually.
Well, like Mount Hill has been lost. That's the hodgepodge. But we're tr- we would like to in an ideal situation recover that. To residential.
So is it all possible in the case of a short term rental use that it does not travel with the next property owner? Is there any legal way?
Um it's how they write up the deeds. Uh I think it makes it very legal.
It's the nonconforming use goes with the property. It has nothing to do with the person that owned it. It goes with the property.
Yeah.
While there's a change of use.
So they can, there's a couple ways, like they can deed things by name. Or our default county is that nonconforming where if it was legal before. We have to extend that. Now, our hope is if they ever stop doing it. That it gets kicked back into our ideal zones such as residential. So if they ever stop, we want it to go back to just being a residential's.
And again, with the saturation of it, eventually.
Hopefully, that's what happens.
Could come back to that.
Yeah.
As you see more coming in on the front line towards the highway, you might see, start seeing limited. Use of those back there where they start folding back into residential air.
So yays or nays in a very unofficial way and how would you like residential in or or short term in residential?
No.
Okay, Lloyd, no.
No.
Shay.
You calling me Lloyd?
No, Trent?
No.
Cody, how do you feel?
I mean, I'd like to say no, but I still find those people that you say, well, it'll it'll adjust. Well, they might die before it adjusts. You know, and and I guess on the even on the other side, I mean, I think. This county is broke. Everybody in this county is broke. You know, and like I was telling somebody the other day, like, well, you're never gonna own a motel. You're never gonna own a Marriott. Just keep dreaming cuz that's never gonna happen. But you can own a house and another house. You can do a long term rental. You can do a short term rental. You get two or three. You can do a couple of short term rentals. That's a ton of money for that person that lives here in this this county. The money stays in this county, stays in those people's pocket. It's like blending right now with all these franchises that come in. You got Dollar General and O'Reilly and a commercial motel. Well, they don't sponsor one school thing. They don't spend one dollar locally. The money goes, Maverick takes the money and they go to where. The Maverick Center, but they don't give two shits about. The high school football game or the, you know, whatever the activity. So I. I know we hate them and I and I feel for Spanish Valley. I really do. And Blanding has none, so. A residential around it that's county, but I just, I just hope that we're smart enough to let the lady say, hey, yeah. You can, we can find a way for you to be able to do it, but. So I'm gonna say I would. Would like to compromise, but I think there's a place for it in residential.
You're yes, I take it.
Yeah, but I do wanna say I also think, you know, the cat's out of the bag. Trying to put the cat back in the bag. It's a little late to do that. So, you know, given eighty percent to deny the other twenty percent the right to do that. I mean, that to me doesn't make sense.
But what about the next?
Uh but can I, can I? Can I say one more thing, Lloyd, and then it, and I agree, if it had never been allowed in short term in in residential. I think I would be right with the rest of you. I'd be right with you, but it has been allowed and to deny.
Well, hasn't been allowed. It's been rogue. It has happened.
I was gonna say that that's not fair. I mean, it's been allowed.
But I but I still, I look at the next fifty, sixty big residential zones that go in. Where we are creating housing are is that we want nightly rentals in all those too.
Well, but but the idea, again, I go back to since, you know, we were talking about whether they're vested or not. The idea that I might have owned my house for ten years and I can't turn it into a short term rental. But some developer who has, you know, magically waved a wand and spent seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars can do it with his property or her property. No. Not.
So Jen's Jen's has a comment here. Jen's, go ahead.
Can you hear me okay?
I can.
So I just wanna. Maybe just bring a little bit of the his- history here. When the when the ordinance was originally created, there was a reference to short term rentals as a commercial use. And it's and the ordinance referred to no commercial uses in these certain residential zones. That initial ordinance allowed for short term rentals in some places, but not others. The court started to say basically, look, short term rental activity is residential activity. What do they do in a short term rental? They sleep there, they eat there. You know, they do all the normal stuff that you do in a house. So all these ordinances that say no commercial activity. That language cannot be used to restrict short term rentals. That's that was the history of this. So counties and cities were forced to say, okay. If we want certain areas to be residential. But not short term rental included, then we have to specifically say. This area is essentially residential and short term rentals are allowed. But this other area is residential only and no short term rentals are allowed. And so, you know, what we're talking about here is the same as any other zoning exercise. Which is the community. And then through you as the representatives of the community, you decide. Where certain things can be uh where certain things are allowed and certain things are not. There's always gotta be. You know, that line, that cutoff line and. You have you have commercial activity, you have industrial activity, you have residential activity, you have these. Mixes that tend to have components of both and so forth. And so, you know, I wouldn't, I mean, my recommendation is to not get too caught up in. Um. You know, having an area that's strictly residential where no short term rentals are allowed. Uh and being too worried that that restricts too much, you know, the option. I suppose the ordinance can be amended if necessary at some point, but there will always be those areas, you know, where you just. Some things just aren't allowed in that area and and maybe ninety percent of the residents there will be happy and ten will won't be happy. But um that's kinda how zoning is and. You know, your your role here is to speak for the communities that you come from. I kinda feel like this whole process has allowed that to happen and I, in my opinion anyway, I think the. Community has kinda said, look, we just, we don't want short term rentals in certain areas. Others, yes, and I know that it's not quite that simple, but that's the basic concept anyway. Um if we get back into debating the short term rental, you know, that whole concept, you know, you could. You know, it's one of those things you can almost never come to a real conclusion uh that satisfies everybody, so. Anyway, just a thought on that.
Thank you, Jen's. And I think maybe to change the language in section B here. Sorry, try to zoom in.
Conditions.
What if we say in order to, because they are built as a residential dwelling. What if we change it to in order to preserve a residential atmosphere within the neighborhood and which is located? An STR shall not have any outside appearance indicating a change from a residential use. What we don't want is a bunch of like big billboards out.
No, but but I would promote the signage.
We we do have. We, we do have signage requirements, so that, that's the wayfinding.
Yeah, but, but then if you finish reading that. Maybe allowed.
Well, it's not maybe allowed, it's gonna be required.
That's where they, that needs to change to required, because that's one of the biggest things, like on most of ours, with the, each one, when you go on Airbnb. You rent a home, it's got a name.
So shall be required.
You see the names, you're not looking for, trying to find a house address. You've got people driving up down the streets, they come in eleven o'clock or midnight, trying to find where they're supposed to be, yes, there's a sign up front. They know where they're going and that, and I think that's it.
I think signage, so signage will be required because we've, the biggest beef, and I'm personally affected by this. Is people are lost in, in your driveway. Like, get out of my driveway. I've had people in my house multiple times.
The surveyor's office hopefully is doing better, but they're not helping us any. Like I have tried, I have had mine addressed, that's why I basically went to long-term. Cause I have it addressed by the city. The city submits that to the county, this is before Brad, but I. And you could not get that submitted to the state. So I came here multiple times and sat down with, I don't know the kid's name. We went, we put it in, we go and get submitted to the state. We had a, we had a little farm field day. Um, so we had a bunch of state people to come to my farm, and so we'd advertised it and I put a pin and the address. If you use the pin, you're okay. If you use the address, it takes you to the bridge crossing recapture down anyways. And, and a couple people went there, and so that, like, I don't know how to fix that.
Yeah, well, and fill for them what was left behind. I'll show you a picture later. What was left behind was literally, uh, less than kindergarten drawings of addressing, and so. One of our big pushes over this next year is to get our parcel fabric up to date and all these things coordinated to it. The nine-one-one stuff, the addressing stuff, the assessment stu- I mean. We are very far behind in our GIS data and what we got back, we have it. It's not up to date and we waited for several years to get it back from somebody and when we got it back. Um, we realized that they hadn't been updating anything. And that just happened within the last few weeks. So it, it's going to be about a year out process, um, for our GIS data to become, uh, better. And we're working with creating an, a GIS administrator position that will be a one-stop shop for that stuff. So it's coming, but yeah, the, uh, what the predecessor left behind is appalling. I'll show you. We, it was so funny, we took pictures of it. Okay, so you're saying, but a wayfinding sign shall be required at the San Juan County Planning Building's discretion.
Yeah, and, and I mean, I. And just make, okay, it cannot be any smaller than this, it can't be any bigger than this. And that way it's just black and white.
We have that outlined in the, so everything I took out of here, we have cut and paste into another document. And so that's part two point oh of getting the business. Yeah, and that will be, I mean, it will be to a T, we want your sign this big, your lettering has to be at least eight inches or whatever. Um, so that we can really make sure people are not getting lost and at the right spot.
I guess my last little argument I have to make, sorry. It's kinda like, I think we're gonna find, you know, we've talked to a couple developers. I can't remember, what's the guy's name that would bring me the chocolate peanuts and the food?
That's what you remember, the guy with the chocolate peanuts?
What's his name, he's kinda Asian. Okay, but I think we're on the same, I'm on the same page with him, I think we're gonna require some of these. Developments that are sold for residential, no short-term, you know, even Spanish Valley. And I think we're gonna find that there's, the demand is not there. The demand is not there at the price that is required in this economy with materials and land and things that are, you're gonna have that. Cause I mean, I'll be honest, I have a house in Blanding, twenty-five hundred square feet. That we totally redid, I mean, it's nice, it's only four hundred thousand dollars, but it's in a lowly price. I mean, like, it's hard, it just, we cannot seem to sell it. So we're gonna have to cut some price, whatever, but it ought to sell, but I guess my point is, everybody's like, there is no housing, well. I don't know as a developer how to fix the affordability, you know what I mean, like. I mean, like, that, that, that we can, we're not gonna fix here, like, you got interest rates, you've got land, you've got. You know, like, we, I just saying that you're gonna find there's the other side, so if you've got this development. Or this subdivision that's built out and it's all residential, it's all long-term. And it's three-quarters vacant and it's just sitting there, it's just sitting there. These people are going broke, they get foreclosed on once, then what do you do? What does the county do, you know?
I mean, if we. I think we address it, but we're not there.
Well, I think you're kind of, I mean, people are doing that on their own in part of the county. In, in, in small numbers, that, that Spanish Valley is, is crazy. Like, I, it still is, it's a little bit like St. George. Nobody stops building there, seven percent interest rates doesn't affect. But the stuff in the middle, I see, you know what I mean, I see a couple of those, like, I'm not making that note. You know what I mean, we, we're gonna go the other direction and stuff, so I'm just saying, like, we're so pushing the one way right now. But when it goes the other way, just budgeting and money, you're gonna have a problem the other way and you're gonna come back here and be like. We gotta find some way to bring in some kind of income, some kind of something, you know, so I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there as, as. Depending on swings, you know, like, where, where are we gonna be?
And we can re- you know, we'll be revisiting that, we'll revisit in our general plan, but I wanna stay on, I appreciate your comments. I wanna stay on track with what we can affect. That is a huge think tank process of attainable housing. That is just very complicated.
Well, I guess I'm just still upset that they're not, they're conditional everywhere. I still think they should be, or without a conditional use permit.
And I agree with you on that one.
The main, and maybe we.
Cause I disagree, I still think the state and legally like Jen's told us, that's how people look at them. Now, you wanna just sit there and argue how they're commercial, we need to go in and inspect and do this, but I would argue. There have been thousands on Airbnb for years.
The main thing with making it conditional is that we want them to register with us. But it's pretty, like, it's gonna be pretty standard.
Have to get a business license, they have the checklist, they have, they, they have to go through the process with the county to get a business license.
Yes, but.
Why are we making them go through the process in, in areas that we think it should be permissible?
So think about places like Crooked Bindy's Ranch in the middle of nowhere. You approved it.
I mean, which one was that?
It's clear up Kane Creek, you know, it, he is going to have different conditions for safety than somebody who's downtown. And that's why we want to have the flexibility of a conditional use. Now, nine times out of ten, it's gonna be the same list, and I agree with you, like, if, if we're on the standard list, I really have to do it. But there are going to be times when these outliers come in, that there's going to be some different conditions. Um, some of it might be what boundary they're buddying up against, you know, hey, you can't build within fifty feet of what, whatever. And so I think we need to, to have some control and some flexibility over what conditions we are setting on those. We're gonna make it a fairly streamlined process because we have to, cause we have a lot of them. And so we want to make it as easy as possible, but I think we need to maintain some control with the, the conditions that we set.
Since Sylvia's sitting in the room, I just, I don't care if it's the business licensing or the county, I still think that. It should be too onerous. This mileage and inspection thing.
Okay, so I wanna move forward on one other thing that's kind of associated with ADUs and such. So we're headed to page sixty-seven, if you're on your own. So one thing I really need you guys to, uh, set some parameters on here. We have basically a space holder on section nine for long-term RV dwellings. We are on our own on this, the cities are not allowing RVs as permanent dwellings at all. Um, I would like to make this a housing option. With the stipulation that you can only have one permanent RV per lot. It does count as your ADU. So this is where it comes back to the ADU, so for an ADU, you can have either an, a detached apartment, you can have an internal apartment. Or you can have an RV, but you only get one. If we choose to pursue the long-term RV dwellings, you're limited to one per lot. And you must be connected to sanitary sewer system, that could also be a septic. There's been some issues with the taxes, and so that's where the must-have current registered plates with the DMV. Because then we're saying it is not permanently affixed as real property, but that is registered as a vehicle still and. That is something that I can see in a drive-by situation. So we are, the cities do not like this plan. The cities want no long-term RVs. We are, we would be the option for this. So.
Conversation with their planning.
Again, enforcement, enforcement, right? So, so we are saying, first of all, let me get a general idea, do we want to find a way? To allow for permanent RVs, for permanent RV living, and this is outside of an RV park. So you can live permanently as long as you're in an RV park, otherwise I'm saying you can have one per lot. And it doesn't have to be an accessory dwelling unit, because sometimes people want to live in an RV on their own property. Or it can count as an accessory dwelling unit where it's parked out back or parked in the driveway.
That's my question real quick. Is that everywhere in all zones or as an ADUs?
I think we said all, so RV.
I don't think it should be, I mean.
It is all zones, this is not an RV park.
Okay, but you can have a.
So if you have.
RV dwelling ADU in residential.
Or it can be a standalone dwelling, so you do not have to have a primary dwelling. So for short, for short-term rentals, you can't do. You can't short-term rental an RV or a tent.
So this needs to say long-term RV dwellings, other than those in a park, other tho- other than those in a.
An RV park.
RV ADU should be allowed in residential?
So I can go two ways on that one.
I mean, I know you can, you can, whatever I go, you can go the opposite way.
I have several acquaintances, friends, trying to save up for a house. They're in mom and dad's driveway with the whole family.
That's where I'm at. My son comes home from college, needs a place to live, I want him in the house. So you're in the RV and he's in the house? No. But that's just an extension to my house for my son to live in.
So when, my other question would, part of the same question, but be limited to one unit per lot. What is a lot?
So as soon as you go to two RVs, you are an RV park. As long as you just have one RV, so this will actually dissolve our temp- you know how we have a temporary RV permit? While you build a house?
It's still.
And we've granted a few of those, well, if we go this route, we'll get rid of that section. So. This would dissolve. This dissolves that.
But why? I like it.
The temporary RV?
Yeah, yeah, like, I could. That was residential, that was like.
But, but it's only for a year.
Well, I know, because of building, you know what I mean?
So what I'm saying with the long-term RV dwellings is that they can be there permanently.
It's not gonna go away because it's your camper gonna use when you.
And so it, it also, this would also help that situation. Even if they are building a house, that then they still have a place for their RV hookups right now. They can live in the RV while they build, but then they have to take down that whole hookup post when they are done.
So it's, it's the hookups more than it's the. The amount of campers that are on the.
So for, from a legal, safety, wellness perspective, we want people hooked into septic. I don't even care if they have power or not, but.
So I have a fifth.
No more buckets.
Nobody ever stays in it at my house, right, like, I guess somebody, we thought maybe my cousin could come for the weekend, fourth of July, but nobody's ever stayed there. We have it there, it's hooked to power, it's hooked to water, it's hooked to sewer.
That would count.
But we don't use it. I mean, like, I'm just saying, we don't use it, it's just ready to go. It's like we unhook it and we go.
Sure, but how do I? How do I know if you're using it or not?
You know what I mean? I mean. But nobody's staying in there, I mean, I just have it in my yard.
So you have to look at this from an enforcement perspective of how can we drive by and see what's legal or not? And, and the easiest way is for me to drive by and I go, he's hooked in, legal, I don't care if you're staying there or not. It counts as your one RV in that lot.
But I'm saying, I don't like, I don't want anybody to stay there, like, I'm, it's okay. No, it's okay for the weekend.
That's when you go into storage, and we do have a lot of people that are claiming, oh no, it's our, it's an RV storage yard. But it's turned into an encampment of thirty people, and they go, no, 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 that's just RV storage.
No, I have a huge problem, like I said, I just, I've been in the city, the city of Blanding, and I took. I'm this guy, I can't believe I'm this guy. But there's, they're all over. I took pictures and I said, I said, Brett, what is going on here?
How'd you make out with Brett?
Oh, we lo- we love each other, Brett and I, we're super buddies.
So you had to think of this from enforcement perspective, how do we do a quick drive-by and go, yep, 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 nope? And it's.
Use the neighbors.
The no's are pretty nopey, because we've, we've got some situations where there's a full-on. Encampment going. It's all over, it's here in Monticello.
People turning them in?
I have had people turning them in.
I'm gonna turn in a whole bunch.
But also.
There's, there's.
But also our own, our own county staff, when they're out doing roads, when they're out doing surveys and they're out in the boonies. They're finding these encampments that are really in the back bushes, and they're like, hey, do you know about this? I'm like, nope.
Okay, but they're just one simple one, I drive by every day, they're just, there was, there's two. But anyways, it was one camper, then it's two, then it's three, now they have like the, you know, they have all the. Oh my goodness. And they've done, you know, they, instead of running cords, now they got the little meter hookup, you know, and they've got the.
So these are what stipulations?
But my thing is, is somebody that wants to build one, that wants to build an RV park, I'm like, but how do I know, cause they're in the county. I mean, and we're doing design, septic systems and all this other stuff, okay? That, uh, how many, how many can you put on it?
That's why you have a septic engineer. I mean, that's, that's beyond our pay grade.
You know what I mean, like, we've literally, they just keep adding, and I'm like, well. Why, how, who are you going to, I mean?
This sounds like the olden days. This is the Kristen days.
So Cody's house, he's got one hookup, what happens if his kids need to store their camper at his house? Be limited to one unit per lot.
It's fine, it is fine to park, no, 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 you can store it.
You can store it.
But you can only have one hooked up, so if he has two hookups, he is now an RV park. So you can have one hookup, so you can have a camper parked out back and a camper hooked up in the driveway.
One hookup or one hooked up to the system?
One hooked up to the system.
Well, that's, that's what I'm getting at, you know, you have, we talk about the Bohannans in. And they're just like, okay.
So how do we say that, be limited to one unit?
Hooked up at a time.
Be, be careful with what language.
Number one, be limited to one unit. Utility post?
No, I'm just asking about enforcement right now.
Plug in the house.
Be limited to one unit plugged in?
No, I think they should be allowed to do what they're doing.
No, I do too, that's what we're doing. So you can have one parked out back.
We're bringing up the, we're bringing up the LaSalle stuff.
Are we?
We are, cause I am not gonna stop on this and I'm not gonna shut up about it.
You're talking about the private, okay, hold on, before we dive into that. It is.
That's what we're talking about.
Or long term rental. Yes, because it's an ADU. But it can't be, it can't be.
One is an ADU. You are not gonna allow five as ADUs.
Correct.
Now you've taken on a commercial business.
Yes, and you would be an RV storage facility. Or an RV park or something else.
If you're renting.
If you're renting it. You can't rent them at all. If you have.
You can do a long term rental in a permanent RV.
In an RV?
Because it would be an RDU.
It's considered an ADU unit. One. As per.
So if, if Lloyd wants to charge the college kid rent for living in the driveway, he can't. It's gonna be there over thirty days?
Absolutely, my kids are scumbags.
Okay, first off, our use table says it's three or more is an RV park.
Let me double check, cause I think in a, in the uh. So definitions, it's.
That's one thing.
Okay, so we need to change that in the use table.
Use table needs to say two, the other thing is, if I build, if I put an RV out and I'm building a house. Why do I have to remove my RV when I'm through building my house, why can't I just keep it there as an ADU?
So currently, we make them remove it because we don't want the RV in the yard.
But under this.
Under this, they would be allowed to keep the RV.
So, um, okay.
So you could build a house and still have your RV out front. And that makes more sense to me, cause people have already put in the infrastructure to have it there, why do we not allow for them to keep that infrastructure?
I, I'm, I'm fine with that, but have, are we still allowing that in residential?
So first question, this is all zones. Do we like the idea of having long term RV dwellings in all zones?
Why do you do that, why do you always word everything to where I can't say yes? I think.
So let's go down the list, and.
In all zones except for residential, I would say yes.
Residential's where you're gonna use it as an ADU unit, cause ADU's not permissible in, in most. Most of them, you can't have it in highway, commercial, community, commercial.
No, 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 you can have ADUs in everything except for highway, commercial and industrial.
And you're gonna be able to long term.
Okay, so can I go back to the? To the use.
In your yard?
Table? Under dwelling, it says temporary use of an RV.
So that's what would be dissolved.
I don't understand.
So, so hear me out real quick, cause we're getting conflicted. If we go with the long term RV dwelling. It dissolves the section we have on the temporary RV. Permit, that's only a year long permit while they build a house. And we, we, part of that permit is that they have to take out that infrastructure when they're done building the house. So if we make long term RVs part of this ordinance. We will get rid of the language and section set reference to temporary RV permit.
So the use table would say dwelling comma, long term use of an RV slash trailer.
Not necessarily, cause that's a conditional use, this is a permitted use, so that whole line just gets deleted.
But we need to put something in there.
We would put in, we would put in RV as dwelling across all, all areas.
And I would say not in residential, but all other.
We just high five.
Okay, okay, and, no residential, okay, coming down the line, Shay.
Have a camper and you're up plugged in.
You can.
No, it's not residential.
You can't rent it, you can't rent it.
It, it, this doesn't mean that you're renting.
Use it as an ADU.
It doesn't mean that you're renting it or not.
It can't be an ADU, it can't be an ADU.
So, eh, eh, what is an ADU?
Does count as an ADU, it's an accessory dwelling.
You can't rent it then, you can't rent it.
An extension to your home, it can be a rental, so you, we just need to clarify.
So that you.
Residential, you cannot rent it out.
Yes.
That's what Cody's saying.
That's what I'm saying.
As a long term or as a short term? Okay, so if we, so we would put a clause in under page sixty seven, ninety seven?
Cause that's exactly what I've been saying the whole freaking time.
Cody, you need to be more clear.
I think the, I'm confused because Kristen's saying from a, an enforcement point of view, if it's hooked up, she's enforcing it. But I'm like, if it's hooked up, who, how does she know if I'm renting it?
That is the problem, you cannot, you cannot legislate away every criminal behavior.
So I think if we go this route, we either need to go all in or all out.
No, I don't think so, sorry, I, I, I just.
Cause I am not gonna camp out across the street to see if somebody's renting this.
Can call you and say, hey, my neighbor, like, like I've got, the lights are on every night, like, here's.
And some Tennessee plates tonight, and then some Wisconsin plates tomorrow.
I mean, that's, you have that, you have that going, you have that going on, and it's annoying.
I will tell you, it is hard to get people that way.
Well, then maybe we don't get them, but I don't think we, we put it in a loud language. If, if you break it, you break the rule, you break the rule, I can't help that.
So renting.
You, you can't.
RV in a residential zone is not allowed. So hold on, let me back up, let's go step by step, so you are pro RV long term dwellings? Period.
Depends on the zone, I don't think it's.
Not residential, okay Shay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pro.
For a cross board.
I mean, uh. As, as a blank statement, yes.
Okay, Lloyd?
And not as a rental, but as a.
No, don't, we're not going that far yet, we're not going that far yet. Okay, Trent, how do you feel?
Gonna go no residential unless it's in Cody's backyard.
I am for them being unfortunately long term.
Everywhere, all over.
Except for residential.
No residential.
Residential, there's my.
Okay, I'm fine across the board.
Okay, so step two, we have the residential versus no residential, so we're at a tie. It sounds like three and three, so you're saying not in residential, non-residential, non-residential.
I just don't, yeah, I don't know why we can't come up with some language that just simply says, you know, that.
We can say permanent RV dwellings are not permitted, and we'll change the use table and are not permitted in residential. That's pretty easy.
I think it can be, it should be, like, you can have it there, you can have it hooked up, you just, in residential, you cannot, we cannot rent it.
If I wanna live in it on my property, on a residential property, I think that's fine.
You can live there.
I get it, you're making it very difficult to enforce.
Son from college that, that got into drugs and passed out, he can live there, I don't, but you can't, you can't rent it.
So you are saying.
Not drugs, are they?
Yes, to residential.
Yeah, it can be hooked up there.
But not renting it in residential.
You cannot.
Shay, yes, you do want to see them in residential, but you may not rent it in residential.
I like that too.
That was a high five all the way around.
Same thing.
Trent.
I like that.
Melissa.
I guess.
Oh, and don't.
Don't change sides, um, but the college kids or the, that's temporary, they're not living there year round.
Like grandma, you know?
I don't know, the kid comes back from college and then they, you know, they're there for six months, they're there for a year and.
But then, that's why we have RV, that's why we have RV parks that they need to go to live in, where there's amenities and showers.
You're saying I don't wanna see them in residential?
No, I mean, I, I think people should own them, they should store them there, they can have their kids stay there, but I don't think we should be renting them out. Or, um, incentivizing people to, uh, live long term in RVs.
Totally agree with Ann, but let's not complicate the language anymore.
It's, it's complicated on the enforcement.
Especially in residential, just in residential.
No.
Do you know, I have children, they, who went to a brand new subdivision. And the children were, I'm trying everything, within five years. People are moving out, the renters are coming in, people. These have disappeared from their homes, it changed the neighborhood. Where children were not, they feel safe to be playing outside, and then pretty soon, um. It's a hard apart because when it's not your property, you don't take care of it as we, we normally take care of that, and I think that. We need to have neighborhood where children can feel like. They know their neighbors and they can, you know, parents can trust for them to play outside and. Do those things, and I like the idea, it's not that we. Prejudice of, about people that don't own their home, it's just to maintain the value of the property, of the owners, they started with, to begin with.
So this section nine is for long term use, we're not talking about rentals. So it's, it's long term, if they apply for a short term rental, they can't do it in an RV camper.
So they can do it.
Live long term in an RV, then live in an RV park.
Afford the property, but just can't afford to build the house for a couple of years.
That's where it's at now.
So you gotta live in an RV, RV park even though you, you have a piece of property, you just can't afford to build on it, yeah?
Well, and so.
So the one thing I've come across.
We have the temporary.
Is this, but sometimes they're gonna be five, ten years, sometimes they're never gonna get there, and so. The one thing we've had is people bought it, people bought a piece of property. They have it, they're working on paying it off, and they're like, I have nowhere else to be, I have no plans to build, cause I'm not there yet. Can I move my RV on it and live there on my own property?
But they're an ag, right?
It's all over. It's downtown Blanding, it's downtown Monticello, it's outskirts of LaSalle, it's.
So they have a corner.
Middle of Spanish Valley.
And they just wanna live in an RV on it, in city limits or whatever.
It's all over, it's, it is not in one area the other, we're facing this across the whole county.
Well, then.
But the only place is really lots, I mean, not the only place, but there's only, you know, small half, you're. Thinking that half acre, that little lot with the RV that just stays there forever, aren't you, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, there's that one right there on the corner from you. That they bought that piece of property, put a camper on there.
Yeah, 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 we've got one. I don't think that's what we want to promote.
Should we put a lot minimum acreage on it?
Especially when the house next door is worth.
I just think we should start by doing the. No, that, that we're fine with them across the board, you just cannot rent them long term or short term. In residential, and you can't rent them short term anywhere. I mean, that's pretty simple, is it not?
Are we liking that?
That makes sense.
Let's not, let's not mess it up.
I didn't hear a word you said.
It's okay, it's good, don't worry about it. What do you got, Cody?
She's gonna put it in writing here and it'll be.
So what he just said is, um. RVs not permitted. As short term rentals.
Anywhere.
I'm glad you can get some money out of your kids.
And.
Well.
And shall not be rented in residential zones at all.
That's fine, let's just start with that, how about that?
But your daughter or your son could live in it long term, for free.
We don't want him to, and if the neighbor turns him in and whatever, then we'll deal with it, but let's just start here.
Cody called my kids drug addicts.
Now you do have, I mean, think about the multi-use we have in downtown Spanish Valley. You know, and so that's where I'm like, if we put an acreage limit on it, the reason why the cities do not wanna go this route is that you're dealing with more of an. Uh, urban environment, people are too close together, you know, as you go down the street, you don't wanna see this. So if we were to put in an acreage minimum, we kinda get rid of that where, okay, if you don't have enough space for your own little privacy. You know, and we could do it fairly minimal, we could say it's an acre.
Like, cause that's kind of a Spanish valley.
Cause then we wouldn't get, that, I agree with Ann, like, then we wouldn't get that you go down the street and every, every lot has an RV on it. Cause everybody's broke.
Well, how about you just go back to the, living in it one year, um, while you're building? I mean, that, that takes that back to where it's supposed to be, you can't use it as a permanent.
Yeah.
Unless you have a primary residence, cause an ADU can't exist without a primary residence.
Poor people or dingin' poor people.
Yeah, but if you're gonna put it in the same category as a, as an ADU.
It's not though.
You can't exist without a primary residence.
It can count as an ADU, but it, this section nine is a standalone idea. That you can have a long term RV dwelling, standalone idea, you don't necessarily have a primary residence.
So maybe, just throwing it out there.
If you do.
Maybe we want a minimum lot size.
I think a minimum lot size would be a good idea.
And if you do the minimum lot size, then it goes back to, we will allow with the building permit. You know, so you can go back to that where like, if, there's no long term RV dwelling in under. A half acre? And.
If there is, it's the limit of a year for that.
And then if, if, if you do the building permit, like the current ordinance is, if you do the. If you have a building permit, you are allowed to for a year, or so long as.
So you're saying keep both?
Well, on the, add, put it with the lot size.
Okay.
Well.
Is that okay or not?
Just one question on that, not, not that I disagree, but we just talked about dingin' poor people, are poor people gonna be able to afford the half acre lot? Or the quarter acre lot, or the five acre lot, but we're only allowing the campers to be lived in on the five acre lot. So we're still kinda dingin' the poor people.
My only thing there though would be, that half acre lot probably has.
Connections.
Connections, you know, and it's, and it's probably subdivided. I mean, you know, I mean, like, most of the time, at least in my part of the county, you can buy that couple, two or three acre. Undeveloped piece of ground for less than you can buy that quarter acre developed lot, that would be my only thought there.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah, I.
That allows it in residential, but you're just saying restricted lot size and don't worry about what zone it's in.
Probably.
Yes.
Because what I'm, what I'm seeing, and of course I'm biased, cause it's Spanish Valley, I think our residential lots, some of them are subdivisible into quarter acre lots. Definitely don't wanna see every quarter acre lot have a main building and an RV main, you know? But we're about to rezone on half of the valley.
To multi.
To multi-use where this is allowable, right, we can have RV. Dwellings, so it's not like we're restricting people living in RVs, we're providing, there's gonna be a whole zone for people who wanna live in RVs.
But if we put in the one acre minimum, most of those lots are eligible.
We just fixed my argument too.
With the one acre minimum?
One per acre.
That gets ugly fast, because when you have twenty acres, you got twenty of RVs.
Okay.
I'll get shot and buried out there.
No, I'm just saying.
I can't go shut down thirty RVs.
Well, let's, let's just start, let's just deal one thing at a time.
With the maximum of X amount of RVs, but I, I'm still going back to the whole, um, families buying these.
That's separate, that's separate, hold on.
I know, but we can involve this in that same conversation.
I think anything over two, because what I have is.
I disagree.
You have parcels that have two hundred and forty acres, and they've got thirty campers out there. How am I?
Probably having a great time around the campfire.
There's a lot of meth getting cooked up there.
But here, so, so we're getting lost. Let's get, let's get that done before we get lost, but even on that, I mean, then that needs to be a RV park.
Correct.
Anything over.
Two.
One.
Two or more is not.
You're, you're gonna tell me that, you're gonna tell me that all these families that bought property up in LaSalle. You're, you're gonna tell me that, you're gonna tell me that all these families that bought property up in La Salle mountains? And then put in a bunch of RV spots for them and their family, shouldn't be allowed to do it no more?
I just think.
They're coming in as non-conforming. So I know exactly the one you're talking about.
There, there, there's the one right on the highway forty six.
Okay, but, but I mean, okay, non-conforming should take, but on the same hand, like the blending thing. How that, like what septic tank do you have? Like you're making me spend. I don't know what lad spent the other day, thirty five hundred dollars on his septic stuff and you're dumping, you got four of them that you've just put in in the last six months.
This guy.
On one tank.
So this one, Lee?
You know what I mean, like?
Yeah, that's one of them.
Okay, so yeah, I would classify this as an RV park, sorry.
I, I just don't. That's a family owned piece of property.
Are they there all the time?
No, that they come in for hunting camp. They go there for holidays.
So they would be under.
Hundred percent for that in La Salle.
So they would be under the twenty eight day limit. If you don't wanna put in hookups, you've got twenty eight days in a calendar year.
So, so they can't have power hookups?
Well, they can.
You can.
You can, but if you stay there, if you stay there more than twenty eight days, then it's an RV park.
So you you're gonna say that if you drove by this, you'd be okay with this right now?
No.
What would you do?
It needs to be an RV park.
Why?
Because look at how many RVs you have out there.
And this is, this is Bobo Hammond, this is Blake, this is Brittany, this is Brandy, this is all his kids. He bought that property for this.
As long as it's less than twenty eight days, we don't care.
So she doesn't care if it's less than twenty eight days. That's good.
So, but you drive by it right now on day twenty seven and they're all there and you drove by it a couple of times. What are we gonna do now?
Well, stop and ask them. They're not gonna shoot you. I mean, oh no.
Will you go with me, Cody?
Sure, I'll go with you. I'm just saying the one I'm talking about around blending, like the difference between this and that. Is you got three fricking pickups, seventeen dogs on a chain. It just is, like Sylvia said, they have just. It's a cluster.
Let me find some of our other gems.
My vocabulary is limited here.
Cluster cuss?
It's a, I'm.
Healthy environment.
Yes, yes, thank you.
And so.
You're in the city?
No, this is just outside of blending. We've. But they had all those RVs that people were staying in long term and they had some single wides. All of that's gone away. And it's, it's all over around the county. Yeah, there's Perkins Lane, I've got one there. There's one. By Dr. Red's old house.
So apparently there's people living here in these cars and RVs. I've had reports. Um, we've, we've got it.
Any neighbors?
Yeah.
They don't, they're not living right next door to a, you know, three quarter million dollar home.
I mean, I think we should start by doing, doing the one acre.
I mean, you got your camp.
So Bo's got, oh, six and a half, seven acres right there.
Up here.
I'm talking about.
This is an, is an encampment.
Coronado, there's a lot.
Yeah, but those are full time living. There, there's no hookups, there are no, yeah, it's, I'm looking out for the people that wanna do it right. They wanna put in the right hookups.
I get you, but you have, but where is the line for us to, when I drive by?
All these guys, the rest of us don't give shit.
Correct. Like, there is so much of these guys in our county that, yes, it is dinging the hunting camp.
No, but on the same, if they're.
But that's good for.
But I think you're both on the same page.
Yeah.
You're both on the same page, like, they should, it's, no, it's allowed. They're good. They're there. Not this one. They just can't be there for more than twenty eight days.
Can't be there for twenty eight days. They're good. Now, if they have their RVs out here and their pop outs are in.
They need to be a.
RV park.
And if their slide outs are all in there, a storage.
Sure.
And so then they need to be.
So your twenty eight days starts all over you?
Oh, actually, all you gotta do is move it to the other side of your brother's camp.
I mean, I feel you, I feel you, but like I can't, we have to have some line in the sand of what's enforceable and not.
Well, I understand where you're coming from, I just.
I can't be like, oh, you guys over here, you're cool, cause you're hunting camp versus you guys about here that are calling it hunting camp.
Wanting to do it right. They want to put in waters or or their, their well, a septic system, power.
Perfect, they're an RV park.
Do their thing. So, so what do you, okay, so how do they give, you gonna make them apply to the state for a. Sales tax number and all that to go with their RV park?
That's business license.
So they have that.
So when they come in and they say, we're applying for an RV park, it's just for our family. We don't have the stipulation that you must have pulled a business license on there. And it will say in their conditions that this is just for private use, which is how Cheryl Carlson. Got started, so I want you to think about that situation. Hold on. Well, think about that situation. On his permit, on his building permit, he said for friends and family.
Yes.
We now have a twenty eight unit RV park. This situation could very easily down the road turn into an RV park.
Like he totally, I, when he was here for real, he, that was abusive. He was, yeah, friends and family turned into. A total business and.
So if we.
Talking about taxes. How many times he met with Greg after he built that.
But the thing is, is if we have these guys come in.
I'd like to shoot him in this meeting because like he comes up and he kills us all the time, but on the same hand, just going forward, I mean.
If these guys come in for conditional use for a family, friends, RV park, cool, we grant them it. We make sure there's proper sanitation in there and then down the road when they're timed out. And they wanna sell it, they can sell it as an RV park that's legal and legit and then they can start a business with it. But the friends and family clause, I want to get away from for multiple reasons, cause it's not friends and family forever.
Um, as members of fire department, are those RVs way too close together?
Yes.
Doesn't matter. There's no setbacks on a.
Right.
RV.
Sixteen feet between them.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Yeah.
In an RV park.
Yeah. You stack them up a home.
But not as.
But not if you only have one.
But if they're stored.
If it's stored, it's a different matter, cause technically they shouldn't catch on fire, technically.
As long as the battery's hooked up, they can all. Like house. Yeah, just like a house book.
Okay, so Lloyd's, Lloyd's fairly loud about it, but how, how do people feel about this? Situation. Do we say anything over two, you gotta apply for an RV park or you can have as many as you want for camping for twenty eight days? Anne, how do you feel about it? Is this an RV park?
Well, if it's a private owner, what additional costs are they having to?
You'd have to put in a septic.
No, no, I mean, like, uh, the business license, that's all they need? I mean, cause they're not charging each other. They're not charging their family to stay there.
Yeah, it wouldn't be part of, if they're coming in as a friends and family RV park, we would, we would scratch the business license requirement.
So it's just recorded by us as a conditional use.
But go to chapter twelve B, RV parks and look at the limitations and requirements that falls into a personal RV park.
RV parks suggest there's money being traded.
Exactly.
I was gonna say, I don't have a problem with.
And there's liability and all that.
Do it. Let them live. We're crying out loud. Let them hunt.
I mean, and now we've got two-way traffic. You're gonna have to have a minimum of thirty foot in width on your driveway.
Which makes sense if you're.
On fire?
Well, if you're making money, then you want those protections in there and for your insurance purposes and all that and. But if it's just your family land.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's my.
I think that one right there, they don't need a thing.
This one?
My family, my grandpa has property and a lot of people spend a lot of their summers out there, a lot more than twenty. It's not a hunting camp.
All of Brown's Hole, yes.
The people go.
They own Brown's Hole for the last.
I'd, I'd just like to go back and do the language, one acre.
One acre minimum for the RV dwelling.
Long term.
Long term. So that takes care of our one-off RV. We're done with that discussion.
Well, but then if you want in. Under an acre, you wanna do an RV.
You would fall under a temporary RV permit to build a house.
Yes. I think that's good.
I, I, I like that. So then we're not even worrying about zoning.
Correct. It's allowed in every zone, but you have to have an acre. And if you're less than an acre, you can apply for the temporary RV permit to build a house.
But that still means some of our one acre lots on Coronado.
Can't fix it.
Whatever. They already have a dwelling on it. They can now have an additional.
They could do an RV long term ADU.
So an RV is a.
But they cannot use it as a short term rental.
Or a long term rental in residential, but Coronado.
No, yeah, no renting at all in residential. It's just an extension.
I don't really like.
Okay, I think that's fun, cause you're not, you're not renting it. It's gonna end up being a friend or family. Okay. But an ADU could rent out long term.
It, a structure, yes, yes.
But as a camper, it's just an extension to your home for guests and friends.
Yeah, I think that's great. I think that, that's more reasonable. Cause the property owner is on site, they're um managing who's staying in the RV. And it's doesn't, it's not a threat to the neighborhood like Sylvia was saying, safety wise.
Okay, so that takes care of the long term. So now we're back to RV parks.
Don't make me go rogue.
There is a.
I just think.
Discrepancy in how far they're supposed to be. So sixteen or forty? I mean, I know we're not specific in the weeds about the details, but it does make a difference. What, which one do you mean?
Where are you at?
Is that on the table?
I think it was.
I wrote it down.
It's right there. It's E.
Yeah. And that's, that's building code. So that's not adjustable.
Building code. You have to be sixteen feet away from.
From the, the next structure over.
Then why does it say twenty in front of sixteen?
Like, that's no building.
I R C is ten feet.
Oh, I need to change that. Between spaces?
Well, I don't know about RVs, but I'm talking building codes.
I think, I think in.
Sorry, it is sixteen feet. It says twenty spelled out. That was in.
I don't think it should be sixteen. I think it should be less.
I don't know that I.
Be ten.
Yeah, cause our, our, our building, or actually the fire code is ten foot. And that, that's why we have side yard setbacks on our other table. It's five foot.
Let me double check, cause I'm pretty sure building code is sixteen, but let me go back and look.
I mean, that sixteen feet is.
Yeah, cause.
That's the distance of this.
Yeah.
Tablebell?
I think, I think the reason.
You is probably sixteen feet.
I think the reason why is because they're planning on having a parking space in between RVs.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but.
But if they're short term, like how many?
If we're gonna push, push this off on the families. Look at the requirements that falls in this for the families. I mean, look at the last one.
But I thought we're not gonna.
Well, I understand.
Like if you have them all facing this way.
Which one, F? You're worried about?
Some of these.
This is just saying you can't be on the road. You gotta have parking for your own establishment so that they can snow block.
Be located farther than a hundred feet from the RV space. It is designed to serve. Uh, you, thi- this is a commercial limitations and requirements that we're gonna, that we're trying to push.
Yes, I hear you, but, but you have to think down the line. This has a huge potential of being a commercial RV park.
Yeah, when they come in and uh get a permit for it.
But at what point do I know that they need to?
That's just like anything else we do. At what point do we know?
Like if they're, if I check in with them every summer, I'm like, what you guys doing out here?
Govern so much to the point of, cause that guy might do it, that guy might do it, that guy might do it. We're gonna over govern so far that we're.
The problem is that they're doing it.
Rights, their property rights by saying you can't do that because the next guy is probably gonna mess that up. Now we've overreached and took away your property rights as a property boner.
It's not that, it's the previous guy messed it up. If I drove past this, I would think that this is a commercial RV.
Which is not, because you don't understand that it's not. It, most of the people around there know that is a family. They've been doing it for, Bohannon's bone that for thirty, forty years at least. They've been doing the same thing every single year.
So they got twenty eight days. And that's state, that's state code.
Just one hundred percent disagree with that and I'm not gonna overreach like this. I will not have any part in that whatsoever.
I just, you have to think of the friends and family clause.
But we can't overreach because of what hap- what might happen. What the next guy might do.
But Lloyd, it is happening. Like, how do I know that these guys are?
Overreach happens. We're gonna take your guns away because that guy might.
I'm not getting into your guns, Lloyd.
That is government overreach.
How do I know?
People's rights away because of something they might do.
But how do I know that they're taking this into town to dump?
Don't know.
Well, then, how is this any difference in the meth heads in the camper down, like?
So that's the same as any permit we do here. We, we send them out with conditional uses, but how do we know that they did those conditional?
Because we're gonna start to follow up on them with our code enforcement officer. So within the year, we're gonna follow up on them.
Okay, so do the same thing.
But these guys aren't even coming in. That's what I'm saying is if, I need them to come in.
Lloyd, a hundred million percent, I don't.
If you have a code enforcement officer, they're getting those complaints and they're responding to them. So the neighbor can be like, hey, something fishy is going on over here. Go check it out. They can go get shot at, not you. And we're good. It's enforced.
Well, we never found their body, cause they buried them out back.
In the, in the fifty.
If they don't turn the time card in, you know.
In the, in the shit bucket.
But you can't, you cannot overreach so far to try to fix everything by.
So if we go this route, if we go this route, I just want you to know that I am losing a lot of um power legally. To go after the meth head camp and to go after the people dumping out back. Then I am, then I am camped out, taking pictures of them in their, you know, jammies dumping the bucket.
If you get, okay, look at, look at the jurisdiction that the health department was giving during COVID. They had more enforcement privileges than our own law enforcement did. You get complaints from neighbors, it stinks. They're dumping their, they're stumping outside. Um, this is going on, this is going on. Send the health department. That is their job.
Our job is the land use, right?
That's our job is land use.
I just think this counts as an RV park.
Is there, is there something other than an RV park that might work? Because I do get the idea an RV park is a commercial, yeah, like.
Family compound.
A family compound.
I like it.
Yeah.
So.
Let's just put no meth.
And it's good to go.
No meth. So, so some way or another, because I mean.
Hunting camp? Do we add hunting camps to the use table?
But no, you go back to your other one, um, the meth camp.
My whole thing is if he can do twenty eight days or less each round.
Does twenty eight days apply for private property camp, camping on your own private property?
And that's state, that's state code.
That's for camping in general, right?
You can't live in an RV more than twenty eight days.
Yeah, but we're allowing it at, as an ADU.
Because, because of the hookups, because of the sanitation. Where these guys don't have sanitation.
How do we know they don't? They may have a septic system. I know they have a well. I know they have power.
Then they're an RV park. What's the problem?
Because it's a commercial use.
Requirements, yeah, that fall in the RV park.
They just met those.
An RV park. You, you're gonna be mad at me.
I'm gonna be buried out back.
Three-year-old home last night that I'm on babysitting here in five minutes.
Okay. He's got kids to feed.
Best friend.
Okay, we will, let me think about this one. I hear you. So you were saying this is just neither here nor there.
Well, so.
We, we need to make something for it.
My family owns Brown's Hole. They have a common bathroom with a septic and it has running water. Everybody lives in their camp.
I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that.
But it's, but my, the camper's not hooked up and how do you enforce it and how do we check that, is it?
Because we know that they have a septic on site.
Do we? Other than I just.
Cause they've put in for a building permit.
I just really think it's not that hard, like the meth one, you go and check driver license plates. It might not be that easy, but, but you know what it is, like you. But, but you know what it is, like you can, you could go.
No, I get you, like, if I drove up to this and I look around, I'm like, yeah, it's okay, neighbors haven't complained.
Nobody, and nobody's even there, like, oh, okay, it's October, here we are.
You come in October, that place, little kids running around on new TVs.
I mean, I don't, I don't.
They could be living there permanently.
I don't wanna get stuck here, I want, we need, you just have something on the commercial side, though.
Well, we have the commercial side.
We need something.
We have the commercial side, we need something on the.
But on the commercial side, like. Where is it, like, I mean, like, is it?
Let me check on the twenty-eight days. If we, I don't think we can be less strict than the state of Utah code on the twenty-eight day limit. And that's, that's consecutively, so if they leave, then come back.
Starts over.
Twenty-eight starts over.
That's living.
So then we go back to our whole conversation.
It might be in a calendar year. Yep, I think it's twenty-eight days.
And it's just because of hookups. You're, that's what you're checking on?
We, yeah, it's mostly the sanitation of it.
But that's the thing, you own a piece of property, are you gonna just?
Well, I just would like.
Yes, they are.
Do something on, I mean. This is on Perkins.
Yes.
My little hat, there's four there instead of two, that's a Conex box. It's just a big shit show. Just garbage.
So this is what we're trying to prevent.
And, I mean, they just started with two, and they were there just hunting season. Now they've got help in there and they're there all year round. And it's just a dump, and then I gotta dump across the road and then by Dr. Red's house on that, whatever that's called. They were just, they keep adding them, you know, and I'm like, well, I'm thinking about putting one in. Coming here and spending a shit ton of money and doing it commercially, so I can rent those spots, but yet. I've got so-and-so out here that's got seven of them on a thousand gallon tank and a well and, you know, and I'm. I just think that we need.
Well, and the thing is, commercial or not, it's the same use, you have people living there full-time.
There, we wanna talk about assessing Airbnbs commercially, well, how about a freaking camp park? Or RV park that sprung up in the county, but none of that's being, you know what I mean, that they're probably. Four hundred dollars a month times ten, there's four thousand bucks. I mean, I wish my lo- short-term rental would do that, you know what I'm saying?
Lloyd, I will look into this particular situation and ones that mimic this particular situation. I don't know that there's any leniencies we can grant off of state code. If it's a, if it is for recreation, that twenty-eight day limit is there.
Yeah, there's not hookups.
Let me look into it.
I've got four, I've got four fifty ants, four sewer and four water, design system.
So let me look into it.
I mean, it, it's. Another one that's got five, same thing.
Cuz what we're saying is you can't have more than one RV per lot without it being an RV park. You're saying we need an in-between of it's not an RV park, but I want more than one.
And I think we could put that under long-term RV dwellings instead of under RV park.
I want that, I think how we have that written is very clear with the adjustments and I don't wanna touch it. Cuz it's not a long-term dwelling, long-term dwelling means you're there. This is, they're there six months. And then they pull them out of there for winter? So these aren't getting snow loads and wind loads and.
No, they haul them all down after the hunt.
So see, that, that is different than long-term permanent.
Built a pavilion right here.
I know, I know, I know the one, I know the one.
I mean, it's set up nice, it doesn't look trash, it did when they had the old. That old sh- uh mobile home from the. The water slide in Moa, they had it sitting out there for a while, but it just got moved to another lot.
Okay, so let me look into it, we'll probably make a separate subsection. Under, under that long-term RVs, we'll make another section that is recreational use of RVs. Okay, we need to jump to one thirteen, this is a new one you guys haven't seen yet. Um, the air transport overlay zone, so this was also largely dictated from state mandate. Um, a new legislation that was passed this last year. And so, um, this one was passed in December, January, whatever, this last year. Um, there's not a ton of budget room on this either because we're just following the Utah state code. And so, we basically just followed their. Their lead on this, godspeed out there.
So that fellow who came in. In La Salle, who has the helicopter, would he need uh one of these zones in order to operate?
So there's been some discrepancy there. Um, as we have it written, we applied it to both public or private. Um, however, I just had a discussion with the cities on Thursday and they said that they don't think it should apply to private.
Christmas, have a good one.
See you, buddy.
The lessons learned from the past, Sky Ranch. So that is why we said whether public or private, the air transport overlay zone applies to. So that it's covered long-term of that airstrip, heliport, whatever.
So, but you're saying you're gonna keep that or you're?
I would like to keep that. So as it's written, I, I would like to keep it, public and private, anytime you're taking flight, this applies. And then we don't get Sky Ranch down the road where, you know, the one out in La Si- La Salle, he's out in the middle of nowhere now. Well, so was Sky Ranch back in the day.
So if somebody has a, is using a, a strip right now, they'd have to come in for an overlay zone?
It will probably be automatically applied at this point, so any current airstrips, airports we have in. Our county, when you look at the satellite image, we have airstrips all over. I mean, all over.
It was all the rich miners.
And, well, I think it was, it was the, the uranium and stuff, we've got airstrips out.
No Kaido.
So, so this will be automatically applied um to our zoning maps once. This is part one, right, and then we will have a separate something this spring or this summer. Where we actually apply it to every airstrip we have.
So the one that we just approved for the fellow in Old La Salle?
And it's basically just a heads up.
From the state, this whole. Like B, all of that.
That's your, um, what do they call that, wh- what do the forest service call that? The, not Nerpa, Nerfa, Nepi?
Environmental Protection Act, NEPA?
That's where a lot of that came from, is from the NEPA standards.
So here under B, uh, on this one. Under section two, general provisions.
Okay. Master site plan?
No, where am I, oh, I'm, I said B, it's an H, keep going, okay. At the county commission's discretion? Why would we wait until the county commission?
They're, they're the legislative body over this because it's a zone change.
So, so we could approve the overlay, but the county, but we couldn't.
So you recommend county commission as the approval.
Well, but, okay, but it does seem to me that it, that if this is something that's gonna be asked, you ask for it upfront.
And I mean, if they're putting in a major airport, then they're gonna already have their ducks in a row. So I mean, some of this for like the La Salle guy, you know, a lot of this is not applicable. It's a dirt airstrip.
Well, I'm also thinking of the rusty guy at the intersection with his heli.
Oh, yeah, at La Salle's intersection. Yeah, he's expired, come back in.
Yeah, let's worry about him and not the junk dealer across the road, that's crazy.
Hey, all sole place, I gotta.
You what?
I gotta go out there soon.
You want me to go?
Yes, nobody wants to die alone, Cody.
I'll go. Cedar Point, I learned about Cedar Point, though, go out there alone. I went out there campaigning for school board one time, nobody cares but me, but anyways, I went out there, there's like twelve people out there. And so I'm just normal, hey, knocking on doors, I'd love you to get your vote, one lady's like, we've never seen anybody out here from Utah, I'm like, well, here's the first. Anyways, I get one, the lady had a shotgun in the corner, she wouldn't open the door, I couldn't hand her a flyer, like, that was scary.
You still tried to hand her a flyer with a shotgun and everything, I would've been like, hey, it's wrong house, have a nice day.
I don't know if they've ever seen anybody out there, that was, it was like Dukes of Hazzard and I was in a movie out there.
Okay, those are the major things I needed to have you guys look at, let's move to, how we doing, do we need a potty break?
We're good.
Okay, on to Melissa's email. Well, and I really like your number one, the removal of the word harmonious because it's so objective. Subjective to what that means. And so I agree that we should remove all language of it's harmonious.
Well, no, I actually think it should be in there, I like harmonious in there.
You're just saying take it out of conditional use?
No, I'm saying it's not in conditional use, and I think it should be put back in there. So we have so, so we, so it's not in conditional use right now.
I will tell you that we took it out because it is too.
Too nebulous, right? And I'm saying that there's all sorts of other nebulous language, and I think it's helpful to have something like harmonious. Because we have, the document has other words like extraordinary, I mean, that's nebulous, significant, timely. Compatible with community, compatible with general characteristics. And it even uses harmonious when talking about signage, so why can't we have it as a conditional, in the conditional use?
I, I know why we pulled it out, um, is just because it opens us up for legalities. Because it, it's not substantial, I mean, you could say that loves is harmonious with the highway commercial zone. Oh, Jen's, Jen's has something, Jen's go ahead.
But my point is, so do, so does all this other language. But I also, I think harmonious is, is helpful, we used it um with the airstrip a couple of months ago. You know, when we had the fellow complain about the airstrip. And as far as it being too subjective, well, there's seven of us. And as long as four people agree that it's either harmonious or not harmonious. Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's, it's reasonable, I think it's a, I think it's a good word to use, especially for conditional use.
Jen's, what do you think about having this language included back into the mix?
Well, that term is used in lots of court cases, um, I agree that it's a little subjective and it. Um, is a little vague or whatever, but when you look at the court cases, they talk about that harmonious. Homogenous, you know, they, e- even though it's a little bit vague, I, I just agree that it, it's in there for a reason and I would, I would keep it. My recommendation is to keep it because it gives you some leeway. The other side of that is someone says, well, it's so vague, you can make it into anything you want. And yeah, there's partly that, but I think if you look in the ordinances of. You know, all counties and cities and so forth, you're gonna find that language. So, I, I don't know why we, I don't remember take, taking it out of conditional uses. Um, if Bart thought it was too vague, then, you know, I'm okay with that, but I. I think it's basically in all these court cases, so I think it ought to be left in, you wanna have some leeway there.
Cuz we have those court cases that have already battled out what har- harmonious is in so many other situations that it's helpful for us. To base our reasoning on what harmonious meant in these other.
On other precedents.
But I think you have to add the context with the word. So if I wanna deny something not being harmonious or being, then I can state the reasons why. The instances to go with or against.
You have to make findings as to what it is about it that is harmonious, as long as you do that. You're okay.
Find the reasoning.
Okay, so we'd like to add that language back in.
And again, you know, it, it, we'll vote one way or the other, right?
Okay, and then you have very specifically on.
Well, I just, I just put in, it would be number eleven, the proposed use is harmonious with existing uses. And this, in the neighborhood, okay.
And then number two is.
We already talked about. Okay, so I had a problem with the pet thing versus the animal units. So the proposed, I mean, the proposed ordinance says you can have a total of three pets. Dogs and cats combined, but I can have eight pigs. But I ca- but I can only have three cats and dogs, that doesn't make any sense, there are a lot of people who have more cats and dogs than that.
I don't think you should have eight pigs, but I still.
It's just not, it's not consistent.
To the kennel, what constitutes a kennel?
It's what constitutes a kennel.
So, do we want to make kennel, should we bump these numbers up? That you can have five. Five animals.
I think that's a more reasonable number.
I mean, I do, I hear, I think of the people who have been dog collectors in town.
Yeah, well, animal hoarding, I mean, we're not talking about animal hoarding, but, but people end up with four dogs. People end up with four dogs.
Or they foster them temporarily too.
But I also think of those dogs' behavior and it's not okay, and the people are not taking care of them, so. There is a point of like, hey, your eight dogs have packed up and are now raiding the neighborhood.
I'm not talking eight dogs, but I'm talking more than three.
If you have, if you have three, if you have three blue healers on four acres. And you live next to me, that is three, probably too many, I would argue, but. I would say you sure as the heck don't need four or five. I mean, but if you have three or four or five. I don't know, what's them friggin' big poodle things that everybody likes now, what them ugly things? If you got the labradoodles, you know, like, well, they aren't taking off the back of my leg. Or every time a kid leaves a shoe out on the porch because it's muddy, packing it off, so, I mean.
No, no, we can't be, you know, speciest to the dog population.
But I'm just saying like.
Doesn't that fall under the nuisance ordinance?
It would, so, yeah, so we're still protected under nuisance ordinance.
Well, I would say that eight, the eight pigs should be under the nuisance ordinance as well.
If it starts to smell or, you know.
They shouldn't have them, and depends on the lot size too.
So what are you, well, what are you saying on a residential lot, because the animal density goes per acreage?
Right, but you said zero to two, in, in the animal units, it says zero to two.
Is eight maximum. So if you only have a quarter acre lot, you can only have one animal unit.
Okay, but I can only, but I could have five acres and only have four.
So let's.
Pets.
Let's go to the, let's go and check out the animal density standards.
Is it common for people, counties to have pet ordinances, cities and counties?
Yeah, I mean, we haven't gone as through, like, a lot of them have, like, we want your dog on a leash.
Oh, there's leash ordinances.
Yeah, we didn't go that far.
So this is very confusing. No, the animal units, when you get to the.
Okay, so the animal units. So this goes across the board every zone. So we have, this is a health regulation, you gotta be away from your dwelling, you can't be living with your horse, although some people try. Some people do and bluff. So there's some health requirements up here. This table is just the animal units. This table is just the animal units. And that was based off of Tuileries. So there's three types of animal densities. The first one is pasturing, so this is anything up to ten acres. Um, it's one animal unit per land, because that's according to. Kind of rangeland standards, it takes one acre of land to support one animal unit, that'd be a cow or a horse. If you are doing feeding or wintering, you fall into this table. And so one to two acres, you get four per acre. So if I have one acre, I only get four animal units, if I have a half acre, I get two animal units.
Okay, so a half acre would be two animal units, go up for a sec, okay? So here it says two animal units. So that would be two times four equals eight.
Acre, you could have eight goats.
I could have eight goats, I could have eight, yeah. That's my point, it's, it's not consistent.
So a half acre, I thought you had to have. So zero to two.
Trent and I were trying to figure this out one day, because we're like, if we do it straight across at four per acre, that gets out of hand really fast. Where if you have four acres, all of a sudden you can have. Sixteen animal units. And we're like, holy crap, that really gets out of hand fast, so we, we said, okay, if you have small acreage, you get this. But then three to ten acres, you only get one extra animal unit per acre. Because if you have ten acres, we're saying you could do four. Animals per acre, that's forty animal units, we're like, that's forty is cows is too many. And so, we came up with this. Math, to try to get rid of that exponential factor. Um, which it sounds like we haven't, cause the exponential factor is still there. And then anything, just to keep this in mind, anything over forty acres, you're in grazing, where we're not regulating that. So. But I, let's address this, we're gonna have some kickback. You know, this is basically the Tuila standards, they did theirs straight across where it was four animals per acre. We added in this extra caveat because we didn't want.
Okay, but.
It to get exponential.
I need a definition, so when you say four animals per acre or four animal.
Four animal units.
Because like an animal unit.
Follows this.
Is right, so like, let's take sheep. So it's four sheep per animal unit, correct?
So if I have one acre down here, and I'm in a low density situation where I'm feeding them. I could have forty chickens on one acre.
And you could have sixteen sheep.
Sixteen sheep.
On four acres.
On one acre.
On one acre.
Do we need to change this, should this be point five?
Well, the only, you can change that, but the problem. Well, I guess it's not a problem, I mean.
Address your issue?
Yeah, I mean, now, well, I still think the number of animals needs to go up to four. But, uh, pets, cats and dogs, I think it should go to four, but I also think this is.
What if we do for medium animals, we do point five per head? Instead of point two five, that would dramatically. Reduce that exponential factor, and then we, and then I would be more okay with just having this straight across the board. Where it's just four animals per, four animal units per acre. So they, they can still have animals, you just can't have too many animals in one spot. So it depends on the acreage, so if they have an acre. There's clauses on the, the mother, what do they call that?
Calving?
Cat, yeah, what is that called though, mother and calf stipulations where. You can, you can keep a pair. Yeah, so you can keep a pair, and there's certain stipulations that I think it ends at like six months, once there's six months.
Well, and four H is temporary, but then four H, even in town, like, I'll use Troy Palmer, and that's in Blanding City. But he, like, he violates the uh, nuisance ordinance. When the smell is that, like, even though it's four H and you're his neighbor, he's a lousy neighbor, you know what I mean, and so. But those animals shouldn't be kept year round, so, but he has animal rights in the city because anyways, but. But even like a temporary on these large animals, I mean, I think we're fine with the four. I hate cats and dogs, but I'll go with four, let's just put it out there.
So let's address that, bump up kennel to four?
That's fine, some of this, I mean, I guess my problem, and I can just throw it out there to you is, I. I mean, I just hate, um. I had a neighbor that was, uh, that had hounds, like twenty-five hounds, about a half a block away from me, maybe a block. But literally the person that lived right next to him, they ended up the glovers. They ended up leaving, walking away from their property, they couldn't live there anymore, it was too bad, and they rented it for a little while, they finally. Sold it cheap, and about the time they did that, then he quit doing hounds. Yeah, you know, but I mean, like, he had totally impacted the neighbor's property.
Well, and I think that the county's a little bit different than the cities, the cities, you're just gonna have tighter parcels.
My neighbor is four acres, you have four, one per hit, one?
So he could have sixteen animals on that lot.
And that is way too many, but, but he's probably okay.
But if we.
At least there's a standard.
What if we cut this in half?
He has horses.
What if we cut this in half to?
Horse is the worst crap you'll ever have next to you, like the crap smells, maybe pigs. Horses are right there.
So what if we put medium animals at point five per head, so he could have eight? Eight medium animals. Wait, on a, on four acres, you could have.
Sixteen, no, eight?
Hold on, let me do some math.
That would be two animals equals one unit.
So if that's point five. You got two acres, you get four per acre, so you could have eight.
That's not enough. I mean.
But sixteen's too many?
Well, but there's sixteen, I mean, I know, I'm saying even sixteen horses is probably, like, I hate it, I don't, don't like it, but. My neighbor has sixteen acres on four, I mean, sixteen horses on four acres.
But is it too much? So that's what I'm saying is, I think we should reduce it.
Well, but I'm saying you just wanted to reduce this, the small one.
The mediums.
And. I mean, I don't. So, so what are we at now, four acres, like, I live on two acres, so I'm sixteen sheep? That's probably not bad, sixteen pigs would be a literal show.
So what if we go down to eight?
Uh, I, I don't know, I mean, I, I'm a little bit like Lloyd, I don't know how, how tight we need to make this, I mean, if we want to. Push some of it to, I mean, some of it's the nuisance ordinance.
So this is gonna come into play when somebody calls it a nuisance, I'm not going out counting tells until somebody calls it in, and then I'm gonna be like, uh. You got too many.
But nuisance isn't necessarily the number, I mean, it is the noise, it is the flies, it is the stench. I mean, like, you can, like, everything, you can do, you can do things right.
We can have some stronger legalities though, if we're like, you got way too many animals out here.
See, the problem is, it's two different things, you've got people that are raising them to, for feed or. Um, four H. And then you've got the other ones that want seventeen. Um, alpacas, just because they sneeze on you, you know, it just.
What are you saying, like?
It, it's just two different types of people, you've got people that are.
They were gonna eat him, I had to get him.
An alpaca?
I think, to me, that's the hardest part in the county, is that two to four acre lot. Because like, I live in the county, I would almost rather live in the city than the county, because I have. I would just throw, um, the Bayless. Anyways, he had the dogs, he had the hounds, I have the noises next to me. And they have sixteen horses on four acres, maybe eighteen horses, they're there all year round. Like, in the summer, it is, you can smell them with just a little south breeze whatsoever, it's. It's a nuisance. You know, but on the same hand, you then you have the one neighbor, um, the Palmers, probably own four or five acres. They come there a week ago till about April, they've got about twenty-five cows. On five a, they calve there, they feed, then they're gone. Like, it just, it's not a big thing whatsoever, and so I mean, I don't know. Maybe how, what I'm saying, but it just. I hate to be too tight and it's hard to legislate. Bad neighbors into being good, and not penalize the guy, you know, with twenty-five, you know, anyways.
That's doing a good job.
That's doing a good job, I mean, that's not a nuisance.
Jenz, what do you, what do you have to say for this?
Okay, just a comment here, recommendation, um. You know, a person's private property, uh, general is they're allowed to do it, what they want with that. You know, within. Um, within the parameters of reasonable regulations, and so all these things we've been talking about today, you, you have some pretty well established regulations on certain things. You know, for example, if you're gonna build a house, you're gonna, you're gonna have to have certain things in place in order to get a building permit. Um, when it comes to these cattle. Uh, and, and livestock. You know, you just, you have to have some findings, you have to have some basis for what your restrictions are, and, you know, they, they should, they gotta be tied to. Things like, you know, the health and safety and so forth of the. You know, I guess the animals, yes, but the, the people, and. What Cody said about the calving is, uh, that concept is really important, because we have a lot of livestock. Owners in the county, and they will have a number of. I, I'm just thinking of cattle, cause that's, you know, what my family did, we would have way more than, than this limit. On certain acreage, but only for maybe sixty days, ninety days while you're feeding and calving, and then they're gone. Um, and, and, uh. You know, if. That, uh, my recommendation is that you just, you know, you make sure that whatever the number is, is tied to a standard that. Is kind of a recognized thing, but also allow for, um. Some temporary deviations, because those are just the reality of being in the livestock business, I mean. It, when this goes to, to commission. I, I don't know that they would ever pass it, because there's gonna be a huge opposition by some of the livestock owners saying, well, this means I can't even. Cav my heifers like I've been doing for the last thirty years, you know, here in the county and. I can't keep my horses here in the summer like I've been doing, but, you know, you just, they're just gonna be some.
Yeah, I mean, we, do you think we've addressed that with the forty acre? Like, if you've got forty acres, you self-regulate.
Okay, I think, I think that's great, and, and for acreage lower than that. You know, you know, you might consider some temporary exception, where it's, when it's a temporary basis, like, no longer than sixty days. Or something like that, I, I'm particularly thinking of the calving season, because I just know that. That will result in a violation and. Be a problem for people.
Yeah, I think we need to add.
How about a hundred elk on twenty acres, Jenz?
Twenty acres all year round, all the time?
Yep, I can tell you where that is.
You talking about just south of town there by, around the world?
That parcel, forty acres, he's got it split in half, the north half, he's got about six or seven bull elk, and the rest, he's got a hundred and five elk.
You're just gonna have to open a gate there.
I mean, is it, so would you say it is a happy, healthy place?
I would say. I mean, I don't know what you do about it. I mean, I don't know, I don't know what you tie it to, I mean, I think maybe forty is a little high, maybe we should go twenty. And above, you can self-regulate, but twenty and below, we ought to have some kind of standards, I don't want them to be. Very strict, I mean, we can do five dogs and cats, if you like that kind of fur all over you. But, I mean, that's up to you, but there needs to be some minimum standard.
Well, I think we all know that guy, girl, that has way too many horses, it's a really terrible situation. You know, we all know somebody who is that, and that's what we're trying to prevent, and if we have something in our ordinance. And when we have those nuisance violations called in, it's very clear cut of just like, hey, man, you got way too many animals. On way too small of a lot.
So like, on four acres, I think, this is just me, you guys can disagree, we're just talking. Eight large animals is plenty. This is just, let's just do the four, we'll just keep doing the four acres, right? And then if you're, if you're over that, then there ought to be some kind of a temporary thing. So, you can have more, you can have twice that, up to sixty days.
I think we need to add the language, the low density feeding or wintering, I mean, it's.
That's how you can add it, that's, that's, that sounds, Jenz would love it, it's legal speak.
But I think we add in the mother calf para-language. That that counts as one unit until they're weaned.
But yet, then, but then on the medium ones too, that's called the medium, you know, the same thing, so you got four acres. You can have, I mean, I think it's too many, but.
If you have four acres, you would have. No, you would have ten with this calculation. Cause you get your eight for the first two plus one plus one.
For four? So you'd have ten?
So on four acres, you could have ten animal units.
Permanently, for a medium.
For large animal. Let's just do, let's just do large animal to simplify it. So, on four acres. You can have your eight animal units plus two more, so that would be ten animal units. So if you.
On a permanent basis.
That's a permanent basis.
And then you do what, double that on a, on a calving?
I think we lower the grazing, I think we do lower that.
To twenty, yeah, to twenty.
And that, if you don't have twenty acres, then, you know, you, you're over here. And I, and I say we don't do a, a stipulation, this is just you regulate that. You regulate how long you want them on there or not.
I'm just so, I'm confused. So you do four and ten.
So we need to change this to go up to twenty acres. So that the type two animal density could go up to twenty acres, and then you kick over to grazing, which is you self mitigate.
Sure, I got you there. But I guess my thing, so you're doing.
I also think, do you think we should make this point two, animals per head on the, I don't care. You can have a lot of birds, I do have a lot of birds.
I mean, I, I don't.
I just think, I think we take minimum animal up to point five or medium animal up to point five.
On the screen somewhere, do I have it in front of me?
And I think, here you go, and I think we take small animals up to point two. So five of them counts as an animal unit. I think that will run, I will to make life seem easier. One, I'm gonna make a calculator for this, like a little Google calculator, so people don't get confused.
I mean, I don't need to talk all the time, but I will, so, small animals, we're doing point two on the.
I think we should do point two, so you get five animals per one unit.
Okay.
And on the medium, we go up to point five, so you get two animals per animal unit.
And that's for all the time or temporarily?
For all the time.
What if you, what if you're lambing, what if you got?
Um, mother calf pair counts as one.
Okay, but same thing, well, that's not.
So we'll just add that, that mother calf pair language into it, that that counts as one. So that needs to go like here. Let me rework it and I'll kick it back out to you guys and I'll, I'll provide some more examples. So that we can kind of get a grip on what that does. We were really, Trent and I were just like, holy crap, the exponential factor on it is really huge. And all of a sudden you can have like sixty animals on it, on a lot. It's a whole hundred and forty pages.
But what I say, say to me, like as a commissioners, we looking at the building part. What we need for, for zoning, planning zoning. And then when I, I think of the agriculture part, it's a total different animal for me. It's just like, I also had to be two separate things because. About three or four weeks ago, Kendall lost. And with him and other people, we went for a ride in the east part of the county. It's amazing what a cattle there. And I don't know how they can, and there's lots of cattle and. Probably it's gonna affect them.
It won't affect them at all because.
They have bigger acreage.
Because you're over twenty acres. So these are, these are just small lots, like.
This is your community.
Yeah.
So you guys are not regulating cattle industry over there?
No. No, no, the only place, I'll be, I'll tell you an honest place right this today, this would affect, this would affect Quinn How. You know, where he's got, where you come just down Perkins Road and then he, like I said, there's that forty acres that's cut in half. And he's got a hundred elk, it would affect somebody like that. Um, it might affect like my neighbors, they, they have sixteen horses. That's why I just think maybe the number's a little low, you know what I mean? Because some of these people that are currently doing it, I mean, I would. For you, I, I'm sitting in your seat, which I'm not you, but, but I'm sitting in your seat. Well, I, I'm, I'm sitting in your seat and I'm thinking like, I wanna get this passed, I wanna get it through and it does have to go together. But that's what I'm saying, maybe we need to let my neighbor continue, I wish he wouldn't, but he has sixteen on four. So he probably ought to still be able to, even Quinn How, there ought to be some kind of grace there. That all of a sudden, you know, this is a, I mean, he's never been told or notified or whatever, next thing you know, the elk farm is. You know what I'm saying, I wouldn't want to have to, to go to that person and be like, hey, you're, you're out of compliance now, you're gonna have to. You know what I mean, so, so we need to, the number needs to be big enough. On existing stuff that, that, that she can go ahead and vote for that and be able to pass that and not have, you know, unhappy. But the large acreage like my farm or like Eastland or Bob Barry or all these people. Like it doesn't affect those, it's really just the, those, these small.
It's a small, tight community spaces.
Four, five, even ten acre lots that are around communities that, that still want to have animals and should have animals. But we would just like to be able to better enforce the nuisance ones, I think.
Basically you go after the nuisance, you're not controlling.
No.
The industry.
Nope, not at all.
We are pro cattle.
Even, even on the five acres, like I'll, I'll use my, my neighbor Ellis Palmer, he's gone, but his family, Troy Palmer. Um, Wayne, um, anyways, like I said, they come in with about twenty-five head on about four or five acres. You know, they have a barn there, they feed in bunks and they're there about four, four months. You know, December, January, February, March, probably don't leave till the end of April, they go back to Verger. It's not a problem, it's not a big deal and we shouldn't impact them. But honestly, if they kept those there year round, that might be.
It's a different story.
That's a different story, so that's, that was just my, I, I really think there should be that kind of long-term number of.
Do we make?
And then kind of a, a little higher short-term number.
Do we take out the wintering comment there? Cause right now we say low density feeding or wintering, should we get rid of wintering?
No.
Leave wintering?
Yes.
Okay. But we need to define wintering as.
Winter time?
Less than a hundred and eighty calendar days, that, that is language I remember that came up. Okay.
Ask Jenz, Melissa's way better in English, I can tell you class than I ever was, so I, I will defer to all the smarter people.
Okay, so we'll add that wintering is classified as a hundred and eighty days or less, I mean, you can't have them on there forever. Okay, so that's.
Now that we've applied it to the twenty acres, what does, how does it play out in the quarter acre lots in Spanish Valley?
It's still this.
So how many?
Point five and point two.
So on a quarter acre, you can have one animal unit, you could have five chickens.
On a quarter acre lot?
On a quarter acre lot.
But on a one acre, you could have still forty chickens? No, now it'd be twenty.
Twenty.
So we've reduced it, you're, or we're planning on reducing it from, okay, cause I, I thought forty might be a little much.
But chickens aren't allowed in residential.
But so.
It's in here somewhere, chicken, you can't have chickens in residential.
No, I think especially that five acre chicken thing.
It's in.
That's like a big, like I saw a thing like somewhere, like if everybody had five chickens and you fed your scraps to your five chickens. Like you would reduce the landfill, I know I sound green.
I've heard this before.
But I think it's.
I read that somewhere.
Good.
I don't remember seeing it, but if you find it, will you email it to me?
I will.
You know, and they're not a nuisance in your little backyard and.
I mean, it does go back to that household pet, cause we don't want people having a bunch of pigs, I mean, like, oh, it's just a pet. We're like, hey, wait a second.
Mine won't eat the healthy stuff, they only want carbs.
Animals, eggs.
Yeah.
You're feeding your chicken eggs?
I don't have chickens.
The bottom of the tortilla bag.
He's saying your conversation.
Okay. Alright, it's getting late, let's roll.
Okay.
So I think we got two taken care of, three taken care of.
Okay.
Did we do more dogs?
Yeah.
We're, we're up. We're up to four.
We're up to four.
Dogs or cats?
Okay, so every time I, when I was looking at this, it made me stop the difference between an accessory dwelling unit. And an accessory building.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think accessory building should in the definition say. An accessory building is not intended for residential use or for, there was other language somewhere. Where you mentioned occupancy.
You shouldn't be able to dwell on it.
Should not be able to occupy.
Uh, it, it needs.
Okay, so we need to add something about cannot count as a dwelling unit.
Yes, cannot be used as a dwelling unit.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Everyone, that one's pretty easy, okay, five?
Okay, five, truck stop slash travel center, I actually did find it in the zoning maps. Even though I said it wasn't in the zoning maps, there's no mention of a truck stop in the proposed ordinance. And, and in the zoning map, it is included with gas stations. And I think truck stops slash travel centers should have their own row.
So we, I remember we debated this like two or three meetings and I remember, I remember. It was painful.
Here we go.
Truck stop is a slang word.
Yeah, I just, I just.
It, it, I mean, you put it in here, there's no definition for it, I mean, unless we create the definition.
Well, what, I mean, there are a lot of things that are slang words.
We had truck stop in here in the definitions and we took it out because we've added it to the use table under. Fuel, what was that?
Gas stations, under gas stations.
So we had it in here and we took it out because we're like, that's gonna cause trouble. And so I believe the only place that it is, is on the use table associated with gas stations.
It actually says gas stations, truck stops, and associated convenience stores.
Yeah, I think gas station and associated convenience, that is different from a truck stop.
So we, I just wanna, hold on, hold on, before you dive in, I just wanna say, we have rehashed this four or five times, hard. And it's getting later and I just wanna like bare bones it, we can rehash it if you want. But I feel like we have hashed it so hard already that let's make a decision to move ahead on this.
Did we ever put a definition in the definition?
No, we took the definition out, but we said for all these reasons. I don't remember which meeting it was, one of our work sessions, for all these reasons, it should be included with gas station, truck stops. And associated convenience stores and services. So let's just get a quick like, if you disagree or agree. And I guess if people, if we have a close call, we can hash it out, but I think we've already hashed this several times. So Anne, do you think that truck stops should be included with gas stations, associated convenience stores and services?
Can, can I just, before we do the vote, can, before we do the vote, can we just look at the use table to see where, where it's permitted? And where it's conditional?
Mm-hmm.
Because I think that is, that affects the decision, it's permitted.
That's what I was about to say.
It's permitted, it's not allowed in residential or agricultural, it's permitted in highway commercial. It's conditional in community, commercial and multi-use. And it is permitted in industrial and conditional and recreational support.
In a perfect world, it would just be permitted in the industrial.
A gas station?
Well, I was thinking truck stop.
So, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I was gonna, I was gonna start it again.
I know, so I guess the thing that makes it a little better is that it's conditional use in community, commercial and multiple use. Which means that if we don't, if a truck stop applies to put a, um, a company applies. For one on Spanish Valley Drive, it's conditional, how would we go with that? How would a planning commission go, would you?
It would be.
We could put a harmonious back in.
So it kind of protects the zones. Say under what stipulations and that's.
Just be allowed with conditions, but it's already granted that it is allowed, you're just able to put conditions on it.
Correct, so you need to come in with that mindset that it can happen, if it's conditioned. But we have some saying, okay, we want landscaping here and.
Or it needs, you know, we don't want a truck stop there with how ma- how many are we up to now, ninety-five stalls? We want it to be.
Limit the amount of.
Limit the amount, that kind of thing, right?
Conditional side of that gives us the flexibility to set those. Now you're gonna have to have very good reason to do so if you're setting.
Because it's not harmonious to drive, you know, with what else is out there, we wanna keep it the same scale as the other businesses that are around.
The problem with that word being in our condition use.
Oh, I see it as the other way around, I think it's, would be a lifesaver.
I, and see, I disagree, I think it's just too controlling by putting that word in conditional use. Cause conditional use is a permissible use with conditions and then you, you add.
Like har- harmonious isn't a condition.
No.
Well, the conditions have to be around health, safety and welfare.
Yes.
Because I would say.
It can be, we want it white.
But why would that word be in conditional use then?
We took it out because we thought it was a little too.
Yeah, because a conditional use is a permit, uh, is a permissible use with conditions. If you're adding conditions, you're not making sure that it flows with everything, it's just conditions of.
No, that's not my understanding of conditional use, my understanding of conditional use is that you can do something. Provided it meets the conditions.
But our conditions have to be structured to help, safety and welfare.
Right, exactly, and that's how.
Very, very strictly.
Yeah, like the, the training they gave us the state, when they were here last, you know, they're like, you cannot undo.
Right.
Conditions on them, just to, in, in fact denying or restricting through.
We don't like the way it looks.
But well, to, to Anne's point.
Too mu- you know.
But to Anne's point, if you put it on Spanish Valley Drive with ninety-five stalls. That, you know, that would be, you would want it to the same scale as the other. Um, businesses out there, right?
It depends on how much acreage they have.
It's like, it's like saying, my neighbor only has an eight hundred square foot of house and that means I can't buy, build a house that's much over that.
So the harmonious thing is, would be, isn't necessarily on the conditional use side. It would be more of whether or not it's permitted, or that word would come into play, is that what you're?
So the use would be harmonious, not the conditions.
Right, so whether or not it's permitted in that zone.
Yes.
That's, is it harmonious or not, but the conditional use is just, it's permitted, we just get it.
With, with these conditions.
Is it harmonious with the uses around it even? You know, so say there's a, you, would you put it right in between two elementary schools?
Right.
But the conditions are pretty, are tied to some standards, building code standards or. Um, health and safety standards or health department standards, go ahead, Jenz.
So this is an example of how, you know, I think you could refer to. Um, consistent with the surrounding area. The, the Love's gas station, uh, on the south, you have a, a commercial area, right, you have those buildings. Uh, they're not gas stations, but there's, there's a commercial area, you have trucks coming and going in there, at least part of the time. And on the north end, you have a, a, a road that divides the north end of Love's. So there's a road between that and a residential area. So it would be, in my opinion, to, you'd be able to say it's harmonious because. It fits within this commercial zone, it's just on the north end of it and there's a street that divides it from the, the, the residential. Uh, if, if it were between two elementary schools, like Anne said, you know, that would be pretty, pretty tough to say it's harmonious. Unless there's a big distance between the, there's a big buffer between there. I mean, harmonious is, is intended, I think, to be not too restrictive, but just, I don't know. It, it just is more common senses, common sense-ish. So a Love's gas station with X number of stalls might be considered harmonious by you, the planning commission. But a Love's gas station with a different number of stalls might not be considered harmonious, cause you think it's just way too many. You know, something like that would be a way to, I, I guess use harmonious, at least in my opinion.
How about this, how many beds are there surrounding the property? That they wanna do a truck stop, how many sleeping units are there? Well, you got all those, just for the sunny acre, or for this example, the Love's truck stop. You got beds all along sunny acres, you got beds all along those overnight, short-term rentals behind. And you got people sleeping in the business park too, cause those are also residential units. So I'm just saying.
They're illegal.
Well, why?
Cause they are.
What, sleeping in there?
Yeah, they were never designed for living.
Well, so, but they, well, for whatever reason, there are beds, so like, you know, if you talk about. Well, so, but they, well, for whatever reason, there are beds, so like, you know, if you talk about. Harmonious with use, there are people sleeping all around there.
Okay, now, now, take, take this whole conversation that we've just had, we've all interpreted this completely different.
Which is why harmonious.
That's why that word should not be in there, is because, and and it's gonna be the next board and the next board, the next board, and everybody's gonna have a different. Uh, that's why things in the law should be black and white, it should be this and this. Your job sitting here is to, you know, go, once this is passed.
To read it and go, okay, it says.
It it's just simple, this is what it says.
Lloyd, that would take away all your discretion. That's why we have you bright people on this panel, so you can use your discretion and come to a consensus, I mean.
It's it's just so we can cover indiscretion.
If the whole group felt like. The number of beds where people were sleeping was a, I mean, very important factor for a Loves. I don't know why you couldn't all agree that that was a factor to decide it shouldn't shouldn't be allowed, but. You you know, if you agreed, if two of you agreed that that was a factor and the other five said. No, that's not the, you know, then that's, that's why you get paid the big bucks is to make these decisions. You represent the community.
The sleeping community.
Well, Anne, okay, so. Truck stops and gas stations, okay.
So back to. Gas stations and truck stops. Do we keep those together? Anne?
I feel like there's gonna be. Uh, I I think at this time and place, I'm fine with it the way it is, because I think it'll, it's gonna end up getting hashed out down the line when. Things actually come to the table.
Shay, are you okay with it?
I am. But I think if you're gonna have truck stop on there. Add a definition. Because I think.
Took it out.
But there might be an argument later, okay, so what's truck stop?
Well, and that's why we.
I mean, that's why the appeals judge said it.
That's why we took it o- out is because we didn't want to define it in case somebody came up with something else. And that's why we just said and associated services.
So should we get rid of the word truck stop altogether on that one?
No.
No.
We need to have the word truck stop, but we did have it defined originally and if you remember, we said, well. What if somebody comes along and all of a sudden they have a mechanic shop out back? We didn't list that in the definition and now we're beholden that you, oh, you can't have a mechanic shop with it. And so we took it out and we added associated convenience stores and services to be broad enough that. If somebody has a car wash associated with it, or a mechanic shop, or Wendy's, or a.
Oh, there is a three-stall wash in Loves.
So, so we we can define it, the danger with defining it is then we are beholden to that exact definition.
Well, not if you also have this associated. Stores and services, you've you've got that covered.
Kinda make that a pretty broad.
Want me to bold it? Underline it, highlight it, okay?
Throw, what are you throwing back in? How are you gonna do that? Like, how do you define truck stop?
Well, do you remember when you stated all your findings, I'm basically gonna go listen to that recording and say a truck stop is all these things.
Exactly. That's covered by the associate.
That's, to me, you just did that, like, it's gas stations. Because here's the other one that.
It's gonna come back, it's coming back. We all know it. At some point, Loves is coming back to the table. And we need, it is? I haven't heard anything.
Yeah, it's getting kicked back to us one more time and then it actually goes to a district judge.
No, 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 it's at the district right now.
Oh, is it? Okay.
So we.
I thought we were supposed to hit it once before it went back.
Well, we did in February.
Yeah, but that went back to the appeals judge.
And then they said you didn't have enough findings despite Cody's long-winded effort.
Cody tried hard.
Okay, I will go full language for that, what else we got?
Uh, I think you need to have definitions of adversely affected party, even if you just reference the state code.
Okay, there was some discussion on that, let me talk to Bart. Because we were talking about anybody could claim adversely affected, and does it have to be an immediate property owner? Can they be within a mile?
But but if I'm gonna make a decision to appeal, I need to know whether I'm an adversely affected party.
Okay, let me talk to him, and I'll email it out to you guys.
Okay, I also think based on the La Salle. Uh, meeting, I think we should have a limit of the number of junk vehi- vehicles allowed on a property.
At two?
I mean, I mean, there was, that was really clear in La Salle, that was something that bothered people, so if we're gonna have a definition of a junkyard in La Salle.
Unlicensed.
This should be covered under the nuisance and we don't have to touch it.
Good.
We didn't say a number, it's if your property is turning into a junkyard.
What are you gonna do?
That's a nuisance. Hey, I'm not the nuisance enforcer, I'm the land use enforcer.
I don't know, I think that is the absolute. Garbage ordinance, so it's just. Yeah, I actually had to explain it to one of the sheriffs. That there was a nuisance order.
Okay, I'm gonna keep going.
Okay.
Okay, in the appeals chapter, it gives ten days for an applicant in an appeal to put together. All the arguments they would make if they were to take an issue to district court. That's just way too little time. So I think you can, I I mean, y- you're just not gonna come up with all of the arguments that quickly.
Two days.
Um, let me check, I don't know that we have, I'm not sure that we have any say on that.
Well, it's, it, well, so it's, it's, I mean, it's ten days to file that you're going to appeal, and then you ought to be be able to have. Some additional time to put together your arguments, so when you look, would you check both?
The appeals was pretty tight to state code.
Okay, but I really, I mean, I, Jenz, do you have something to say about this? I would think you would agree.
What do you want, fourteen days, thirty days?
See what Jen says, it takes a while.
I missed, I missed the, sorry, I missed that, just.
So in the appeals chapter. That it's not, we're only giving them ten days to come up with the documentation.
And it sa- it specifically says they have to come up with all of the arguments they would make in district court. And I just don't think ten days is enough time.
Do you know if we can adjust that?
Says it in section three.
Uh-oh, oh no.
What page of our?
I don't know for yours.
Hold on, we just went dark screen here, bring it back. Oh, no.
Thirty-seven, page thirty-seven.
Alright, let me see if I can get it back up.
Appeals, okay, let's see here.
So if you go down to section three. Initiating appeal.
But it's just being filed, it's easy to file.
It says every the- it says every theory of relief the, an uh. Appellant intends to raise on appeal, the appellant must raise every theory of relief it can raise in district court.
What, hard C lo- number what?
C six.
C six.
But I don't think you can come after the ten days with a new argument.
Well, I I don't think you should, you should have to put together all of your arguments within ten days, I think you should just be able to say. We are going to appeal, and then you have some period of time to put together your argument. This says you have to do your whole argument in ten days.
No, I think it's just it has to file.
No, that's not what this says, it says the content.
You can't, like, well, I'm gonna appeal this and then you go out. And and find the evidence and the neighbors and what, I mean, you should.
Let me show you our appeal form, I think this will help.
While she's looking that up, what what this means is. When you appeal, you you let the county know in writing within ten days of the decision. And you state the items that you're going to appeal, this is a very. What's the right word, I I think.
And you talk code?
Very, yeah, i- it's just a, it's a very forgiving standard, what I mean by that is. Um, I'm trying to think, let let's, let's go to the Loves gas station situation. So, the appeal there, um, they felt like the application was incomplete. And they felt like it wasn't in the, wasn't allowed under the current zoning. And those might be the two main things, there were some other issues, but those are pretty broad. Um, issues to appeal, and so if you put just those two in there, that covers quite a lot of stuff. Um, I I think this is written. Very much following, um, I don't know if Cludma has exactly this, ten days and so forth, but. I think that's the county's um timeframe, which is a common timeframe. But it, I I just, I think it's not quite as um. Detailed as maybe what you're, what you're interpreting it, Melissa, I.
This would be all we want in the ten days.
It's pretty informal.
Okay, well, it, when I read, the appellant must raise every theory of relief.
Should it say business days?
It can raise in district court, that seems like you can't bring anything else up.
No, cause I don't get business days.
No, you do, that other stat, you had twenty business.
Like, when I give notice now, it's ten days.
Well, I think it should be business days.
It says ten business days on there. In the time.
If it doesn't, doesn't say that in this note that I'm looking at, it just says. Chapter. In the appeals chapter, ten days is not in, well, does it say ten business days? Maybe it does. It does say it there, you're right.
Section three A.
Yeah, I see it, it just didn't say in the note, so.
A- anyway, yeah, thi- this is, uh.
Yes, see, I'm I'm looking at Cludma right now. And it doesn't say anything about how you have to raise every issue.
But Cludma is, um. The 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 Cludma basically puts the, these types of details on the county to produce on its own.
Set this checklist.
So, every, everyone has the right to appeal. Um, but the Cludma leaves some of these details to the county to put in, and if the county's terms were too. Restrictive to where they were essentially unconstitutional, the court would say so. But, um, this is just letting the county know, hey, we're gonna appeal this decision, we think you were wrong about, you know, these things. Boom, boom, boom.
I think we need to leave it limited because most of the time, as soon as we make a conditional use, and they're like off to the races next week. And so if we don't. Have it sh- a shorter time, they're already invested, they've got contractors out there and so.
I I just think it's too little, it's one thing to say I'm going to appeal, it's another thing to have all your arguments ready.
Well, I mean, all, all it is is this, it's this form.
Different from what we had before in our language.
Well, this thing has been approved before, it's different from what's in twenty eleven, because this was approved prior.
But that was for all appeals of the county, it wasn't necessarily land use appeal. Like the the things you had comments on with Mitch's, that was appeals across the county, not necessarily planning and zoning. But this, this is what we're asking for in ten days.
Okay.
And so it's a, it's a one-pager. You know. Give us a five, less than five-page written document that tells us why. And so it's not, it's not a deep dive if you need all evidence. It's just what are you, what are you holding us to, so that the applicant can know that.
Okay.
Is the last one doable?
And number seven, I will, any changes we do, so I'm meeting Wednesday and Friday with our legal team, any changes I'll do in red.
Including what we talked about tonight, cause otherwise, okay.
I've got something, though, that's not.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, um. So I'm thinking a Spanish Valley Drive, community commercial. Zero set foot setbacks. And if we're looking long-term, twenty, thirty years down the line, I mean, this is a major gear shift, so. If we're expecting any road widening to happen on Spanish Valley Drive, because if you remember, SITLA had that study about their planned unit. I mean, their c- community development plan that they have. They're, all these traffic studies and they've got, you know, wider streets, all that. Do we need to consider setback, front setbacks on Spanish Valley Drive before people start putting? Buildings right there and then later down the line, we need more road space and we can't get it, because there's.
So most roads have a. Have it built in, like UDOT has a frontage built in that you cannot build within that area. SITLA's a little bit of a test cell. That's a county road right now and I don't think that we have. There's an easement on the roads, they wouldn't be able to encroach on that easement for if we need to widen the road.
But is, is what's it, the existing easement, is it big enough for what?
Like, tell me if I'm wrong, but so, you're kinda talking about those properties that are built just right, zero setback on the front. And the thing that that does, not, most communities don't have that, but, well, I think it's, and maybe you hate it, I don't know. But maybe that's why Moab, URA, these places are s- tourist and walking communities like them. You know what I mean, because, but they don't allow you to get bigger, but but it's like Moab, Main Street, there's a lot of that. That is, you know, like all.
Right up to it and parking.
Parking's in the back, in the behind, so people, tourists really like it.
Yeah, I.
You know, but, I mean.
I I'm. She's saying if down the road, down, down the road, we wanna widen the road, do we have the room and?
Right now.
Those should be built in.
So I could, cause I'm right on the road and my fence line and then.
Fence line is the back of that.
So, it, what do you mean, that is where I can start putting a building right at that fence line, right?
No, we've got a twenty-five foot.
Not for com- community commercial.
Uh, are we twenty, are we community commercial all the way down Spanish Valley Drive?
Mm-hmm, both sides.
Yeah, you can put it right on it.
Right?
Absolutely.
Does that leave enough room for a sidewalk?
All on the county side. It's not on the back, so when, when they come out and do your property markers, it's back of sidewalk.
So where my fence line is.
Is back of sidewalk.
So the fence, the sidewalk would be on.
Like, you can see, we've built in.
Other side.
Yeah.
So I guess that's all I just wanna bring up is. So we've built in future frontage.
Have enough room.
Here's a property boundary, it's a yellow, so we've already built in a a boundary.
It's six feet. And that includes, you've got your five foot for sidewalk and.
That's a mistake.
Well, as long as there wasn't an oversight there, I just wanted to make sure we still wanted, that we can still. Plan for the future with zero foot.
Yeah, I think that house is crowding it though.
Now, this is our parcel fabric's off just a little bit, as all parcel fabric is, so reference only, so this would be shifted just a little bit here.
It's twenty-five feet from some part of the road.
But if you look, all of our roads have that built-in, they have a built-in buffer first curb sidewalk.
Gel with the, you know, good transition with what SITLA's doing down there.
SITLA's. Probably not ever gonna build out.
That same road standard. That, it's that same road standard, yeah.
And then the last one is the fifty-foot across the board height.
Love it.
Can somebody give me an example of an existing building that is fifty foot, just so I have a frame of reference?
Probably this building.
This building is fifty foot?
Yeah. We also.
Really cold in the valley with all that shade.
So, hold on though, so. Well, the, you gotta think about, the basement's ten feet out of the ground.
I mean, it might be nice in the summer.
You think this building's fifty, I don't think so either.
What, you think it's less? Less.
I would say not more than forty.
You've got two feet of concrete between floors, and you've got twelve foot high ceilings each floor. So you're at twenty four, twenty six, twenty eight, plus ten feet out of the ground, you're at thirty eight. Plus whatever mechanical systems on top.
Tower to.
To follow up with your fifty feet, we also have that, any building more than two stories will require a variance.
Okay, so just as long as people.
So that was to, that was to make. That was ma- make the pole barns happy.
I'd call bowl on that two story variance thing.
That's what you wanted to write, that's what I wrote.
I said I wanted three stories.
You can get a variance.
Okay, that's all I had.
So did everybody agree on that, or is that just her?
We talked about it in multi-use, having a three story apartment building, and do we feel okay about having that next door to a little residential house? That was the discussion.
And I thought we said, yeah, three stories.
Three story, we all agreed on it.
So do we wanna say three stories? Fifty feet and three stories?
I mean, cuz then we had it.
You're not gonna be over fifty feet with three stories.
Fifty feet is standard four stories.
Alright, alright, don't get your panties wet, I got it.
But this is saying, if you have more than two stories, you have to get a variance.
Do you need, oh, so at three stories?
It should be three, cuz three's pretty standard.
No, at four stories you need a variance. Three, you're okay.
Anything over three.
Everything, anything over three. Okay, any other?
Can we go to the used tables real fast?
Anne's got more than the weight.
That's all I had.
Oh, sorry, you look like you were.
I just, nobody could still, could tell me a fifty foot building.
Well, we were talking about, when we talked about, I remember we did like some barns and grain reeds, we were talking about that kinda stuff.
Well, I mean, like in a community commercial setting, like, is there one in Moab that's fifty?
Go through that.
The tallest one is the Homewood Suites, and it is forty, yeah, it's close, it's like forty seven.
To the peak kinda thing?
It's, yeah, it's flat roof, but I think it's forty seven to the.
But Moab's in a bowl, down there low where the water table is. I don't know, it feels like it doesn't impact the view shed as much.
Yeah, but anything that was slowed down the wind out there, I'm all for.
Windbreaks.
I was thinking about Mexican Hat Guys, which is a little community, which is in recreational support, and there's some stuff that I.
Not anymore.
Oh, it isn't? When did Mexican Hat move out of recreational support?
Because when she called me.
Who's she?
Joy Health. And I talked, and she said, I don't want government in my. In my land use, and so I said, well, multi-use is the most open, and so you can go. For that if you would like. So Mexican Hat is now multi-use in ag. She did not want recreational support in her town, and she owns half the town, so. And the oil. And this gravel pit.
They wanted water, wanted it either.
Okay, um, so let me see what this one is.
So, up here, she's got a camp park on this big chunk, and then a gravel pit back here. And then, um, down here, we've got oil and gas production, we've got restaurants, hotels, but. It was made very clear to me she does not want to be in recreational support.
Okay, well, it was really limited, okay. Is there a reason that we don't, sorry, I'm gonna bring up animal density again. It's permitted for type three, but not permitted for type one and two in highway commercial.
I mean, this is your, your small lot stuff versus your big lot stuff, we couldn't permit it in highway commercial.
Where's there any highway commercial left?
LaSalle has just a little chunk in Spanish Valley.
I'm gonna say, LaSalle would probably want it, would they not? I would think if TC was here, he'd be.
Okay, I'm, can I keep going? Okay, so, uh, a little private school in your neighborhood. So we don't allow little private schools in residential, I think that could be conditional. Like I know when my daughter, there was a little preschool in our residential neighborhood.
I remember we had this talk, and it was. We didn't want screaming kids in stores, Lloyd said.
Some of us don't like kids.
So where are we at? Schools? Private educational facility, no. I think childcare, childcare center is allowed. In residential. But educational facility could be like the col- Monticello College up here. Or.
Definitions matter.
Yeah, and because it's commercial. I don't think you'd want that in your residential, like a private. Pro- for profit educational thing in a residential, because, as opposed to a public, because. You're paying property taxes that go to the public schools, so it's more.
No, but like, here, I'll give you an example, you can tell me if I'm wrong, so. Um, third, three year old, four year old, even my five year old that did half day kindergarten. There's a couple ladies in town, like, that's not in the county, but they're in residential, their homes, they've added even onto their home, and they do a preschool.
But that's child.
But that's childcare center and the home occupation childcare, if you're under a certain number.
We got them covered.
You count as a home occupation. This is like an actual institution you got parking and.
No, so, I'm, I'm with you then. Hundred percent.
So, electric vehicle charging stations, why is it, um. Why is it conditional in, in, uh?
Everything?
Well, no, it's, it's, it's permitted, oh yeah, why is it conditional in everything? I think it should be permitted in highway commercial and community commercial.
It shouldn't be allowed anywhere.
Around them, right?
In fact, we, we might even add a section on that to the ordinance down the road, where it's its own chapter, like glamping.
That'd end up not being allowed to park them in your own garages.
So, golf courses, why can't they be in conditional in agriculture?
I'm fine with that. Anybody else?
Garages, um.
Golf courses in ag?
Yeah, they should be, why not?
In ag?
Cuz we're trying to protect our ag land.
Yeah, we did talk about that.
So do we wanna?
So we don't, we don't sell out a big ag piece to a developer and lose.
Well, you can sell a big ag piece to a developer for homes or for golf course. Okay, uh.
So, hold on, do we, do we wanna include it in ag? Anne's saying no, Cody's saying yes, Melissa's saying yes, Shay's saying.
Uh, yeah, I think that'd be fine.
Boyd?
I'm with Anne.
See, here we go.
Okay, so we got three to two, we're adding golf courses to ag. As a conditional, right?
Um, a little grocery store in rec. As opposed to no groceries in rec?
I think we, don't we have convenience? We had something else that was like your neighborhood market.
Truck stops, they should definitely go.
No, there was something, sma- this is like Walmart. We were looking for, there was something else.
Two stall truck stops.
I don't, I. I don't see it.
With the residential blocks are different. Uh, like in my block in Blondie is different than other blocks. So in my blocks, it can be a church, it can be a, a daycare, a preschool. And residential.
Okay, let's do it.
So add grocery store to rec?
I think you should add grocery store to rec.
Okay, yeah, I, we're almost done, add grocery store to rec?
Yeah, we're almost done. Why is?
Grocery store in rec.
What about it?
Can we add it to recreational support?
I don't, I, vending machines only.
So, why are leatherworks products permitted in ag? Community commercial, uh, multi-use, but conditional and industrial? Seems that should be permitted too.
It's a pretty small little shop, leatherworks, to be thrown in industrial? Commercial business.
Yeah, but we have it here as, as conditional. Doesn't make sense that it's not permitted if it's permitted in these other areas.
That makes sense.
Okay, so, um, marine equipment sales and services, we don't allow it in rec, but what if I need my boat fixed? I think it should be conditional.
Anybody else?
SITL would probably agree with that. Aren't they the ones pushing for RV storage or something else, marines, boat storage? In rec?
Makes sense.
So, um. So, we don't allow nursing, nursing homes, rehab homes, or assisted living in residential? You know, I, I, I'd be fine with that if it were conditional, but also, what if you have your home for elderly people? A lot of people convert their homes like for childcare, they take care of elderly people. I think we oughta have, either we make it conditional and residential, or we have, need to have a, just like we have childcare, we have elder care.
I think. That's a big facility, and I'm thinking like, I know what you're talking, there's like the adult homes where there's five or less. I think that would count under a home occupation.
I don't think so, but. I would be fine with it, but I don't.
Well, I would think of that as like a group home, you know, so, so maybe a category of group homes.
Do we need to add group home?
We talked about that before, it felt, it already fell under another category. We're trying to find it.
Let me all follow up on.
Okay, so, uh, on public uses or quasi-public uses? Um, schools in neighborhoods, we don't have, uh, we don't have them as conditional under residential. Schools are public schools, right?
Where are you at?
Public uses or quasi-public uses?
Well, so you're saying schools? So that would be under public educational.
That's the under educational facility? So they're separate, right?
And then what was the other one you said?
Homes for the elderly. Then, um. Okay, so, let me, which one is this?
How big a list you have, holy cow.
Well, I went through it closely, sorry.
No, you're doing, I mean, I'm just saying, wow, you can find every little one.
Okay, food truck vendors, so we have that is not allowed in residential, but they have pop-ups at neighborhood events.
So then they have to get a permit from the county.
Permit for.
They just do it real quick and then they leave.
And that's not, that would be more on business license than us. Also, I think, I think we got that covered.
So, so telecommunications towers, you know, this is that whole thing, if we can't say no to them, why are they conditional?
Well, because we need to set the conditions and. Uh, if you noticed, that is a space holder right now. That's gonna be a separate ordinance that we need to rewrite, there's new legislation coming down the line. So that one will be added later this summer, once we get the state legislation.
So we're gonna pass it with the.
It'll be, yeah, it'll be passed, telecom towers is changing, so we'll be writing that se- that section as a separate ordinance.
I'm done, but, but there are a lot of typo, typos fixes and stuff like that, so make sure you go through it.
Hey, anything else?
I just wanna say that, um, and this is a compliment to LaSalle, but if everybody in Spanish Valley knew that. They could basically choose what zone they wanted to be in. Um, there might have been a lot more participation, and our map might look a lot more different, so I do feel like there was a little, uh. You know, if there was a little more, if we had threatened violence, maybe we would have gotten our voices heard a little better. So, kudos, kudos to LaSalle.
Well, so, yeah, there are some things.
I got one more, I got one more, I just would like to vote on it, so, I don't want mean to make anybody grumpy, but. For real, short term rentals, my last time, they should be permitted somewhere Sylvia, I think. I don't know about the rest of the board, but I keep saying it over and over again, I just feel like. It's a good place in the county, I just, I just can't see why they all need to be conditional.
Cody, I don't wanna go that route.
And we, and we, and we govern them with business license. There's the checklist that goes with the business license, everything that's required to be a nightly rental, I one hundred percent think they should be.
So basically, our condition is. That you come in and apply for the business license, and you do the, you do the application with them.
Not the next one. And not the next one, this board, yes. I one hundred percent agree with Cody that this should be a boat by this board.
Like, we should, we should just have.
With, it, it will be permitted in what zones, multi-use, yes.
Well, we should have the discussion, I mean, we just kinda get pulled over on the discussion, and I'd like to have it, I mean, I think. They should be conditional in residential, I think they should be permitted in ag, I think they should be permitted in commercial. I think they should be permitted in multi-use. But, somebody could argue something different, and I would, but I mean, just to say they're conditional across the board, I just strongly disagree. And think the county is, is gonna shortchange themselves, and it, just, this board changes. Like, the board, we, we look at the board today, everybody on the board, I think we, we do. I don't think it's a political board, I think we all have a little varying issues based on where we live, and I think we. We kinda see to the people that live in other areas, but the other, next board may not be that at all, and so.
Open it up, you're opening up a can of worms for that zone. I'm fine if you wanna go that way, but know that it gets out of hand fast, that's why we had the moratorium in place.
That's.
So, but I need to have.
Building permit, get a building permit, then, then you're good to go.
So, final documents will be posted Friday, so let's have this discussion right now.
Okay.
Okay, so you want it permitted where it's conditional right now?
Come up with all your arg- arguments.
You have ten days or less.
I just did, I, I just did.
You're saying have it permitted across the board.
And conditional and residential.
And you do want to open up residential?
Well, that's it, there should be condition, there should be, I would listen to harmonious arguments. I would listen to.
That's where that word comes in.
You know, I mean. Like, like it or hate it, I'd like, I'd like the person to come in and say, hey, this is why, and then us as a board.
Be choosy like that, you have to, if it's conditional, it's allowed.
Yeah, how are you ever gonna turn someone down?
With conditions.
But then you're being selected, so you're gonna make impossible conditions for that one person because you don't like what they're doing.
Well, you know, you can't make impossible conditions anyway, but.
It, I am at your directive on this, but you have heard my fair warnings.
Okay, so let's, let's just talk it out, then, so we take and say it's, it's not. Okay, so let's, let's just talk it out then, so we take and say it's, it's not. But could somebody come up with something? Some way that we could help that, I mean, you already made your argument, but. But that one, that one person that comes in, and today she's. Her val- her house value is significantly less than her neighbors.
Cody, that was one to three hundred eighty short-term rentals.
California, who can buy up a bunch of these houses, and it won't even matter whether or not you're living there or not, cause you're not gonna know anybody. They're not gonna be people you know anymore, they're all gonna move away.
I'm very strongly against it being in residential, I would, if you wanna make it permitted, and then they have to follow the separate business license ordinance.
Okay, so I'm with that.
Makes my life easy.
Okay, that's fine, okay, none in residential.
And then turn all your conditionals into permissible's.
God, I hope you guys know what you're doing.
So the problem from your perspective, um, Kristen is we, you just can't regulate them if.
The problem is it will go ape shit, yes, I'm gonna say that on public record.
Yeah.
I, I think it's gonna filter itself out.
I do too.
I really do.
Especially, especially, I mean, and, like, I, I'll defer, like, I, I, I agree that it's, it's different, but I would say. The middle part of the county, I don't, I don't think it matters. I mean, I don't think the area around Monticello, it's gonna filter itself out quickly. You either have the ability, the supply there, the demands there, your property is good enough, there's a lot of properties that's been on the mar- the market. Airbnb, they're, they're poor properties and.
The promise you're power is so low, you might have to rent two times a month to make your monthly rental. Fee. And people are going to stay in short-term rental, renting two nights a month, and hitting that mark that they need to. And not having the wear and tear, it makes business sense, but it gets rid of any long-term housing option. There will be no rentals on the market.
But, I, I'm a.
I disagree with that a hundred percent.
Landlord, and I would far prefer to have long-term renters than short-term, even if the money is so good with short-term. Um, because I don't wanna deal with the mess of short-term.
See, I think the opposite, I hear that it's so much better to do short-term rentals, they're just in and out, they're.
And you have their Visa card, no one leaves you hanging for the carpet.
Destroyed a house they stayed in for a year and a half.
It's hard to get rid of evict, um, renters, right, in this state.
Yeah, they have more rights, anybody that stays for thirty days or, um, thirty days or longer.
But I, I would say, I would say there's some long-term I definitely like better, I mean.
Thanks.
Thanks for sitting there. We will, you guys too.
We'll just stay here by ourselves because, um, I come meeting at nine, and I had to keep reading the packet for tomorrow, so.
Sounds good, thank you.
See you guys.
Well, how about, how about we do permissible in Ag and multi-use and conditional in community commercial?
Do we?
And nothing in residential.
So if I was gonna do it.
I would go.
Would you not do that? I would go conditional in Ag. It's not permissible. It's not permissible in highway commercial.
Kristen, you're gonna be by yourself here?
Oh, yeah.
These two.
I hope so.
These two right here.
She's packing.
Dogs are in the truck.
Condition.
I'll be okay.
Both of those, but not this one. Conditional there.
But why, why would you go conditional on some and not on others?
Same as all the rest of them? There's different reasoning on every line item.
So you're saying if, if somebody's in Ag, we might want some conditions, but what would those conditions be?
Well, for Ags, infrastructure.
Yeah, yeah, mo- most of your Ag, you have no.
But they're gonna have to, I mean, any building permit is gonna uphold that.
Right.
So why not just make it permitted?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
But we don't wanna encourage more of that. Spreading out of infrastructure in places that where it's not already connected, I mean, that has been the. That's in our general plan for the whole county, is where built, develop off of the existing infrastructure, not start putting it out. In harder places.
That's an impossible task in this county, everybody's off-grid, we're off-grid in town.
I think if you're gonna make it permitted, it should be permitted in recreational support, that just seems.
I agree.
You know, that's just, that's, that's, that's what it's there for.
So, Cody, your.
Well, they're saying make all of these permanent.
Right, and, and, but now they're picking and choosing which ones, and I think that is definitely one that you would do permitted.
I say we take a vote on it, because that's more or less me and Cody right now, cause, and, and it is just turning the conditionals into permissible's.
Okay.
Changing nothing else on it.
So the current conditionals.
And it would fall under the business license ordinance that has yet to be even drafted.
Yes, and it, but that's gotta be fairly simple compared to this. Because I can pull you one right now, it's on my desk, from when I did my one Garfield. And, and they're very thorough.
Would you please? Cause that needs to come ve- very quickly, and it's no longer on my desk, but that needs to come very quickly after we pass this ordinance.
And any new owner gets a new inspection by the building department. So, like, when the last one sold it to me, I was a new owner, so I had to submit for my building or business license. And they send you this checklist, you go through it, go out, go application, go through the checklist. Then they come down, you pay for the inspection. Um, they come down, inspect the house, it's at the park, you're good to go. But it's a one-time thing.
You're just trying to loop.
The inspection's a one-time thing?
Not that we.
We're, we're probably, Lloyd, you and I can talk more, cause you have personal interest in this. Um, but do send me the documents that they have, cause we need to get that together quickly.
I wanna counter. The Cs to Ps. And say of the four Cs. I couldn't support turning them all Ps, but I could do community commercial and multiple use Ps.
Why not Ag and why not Rec support?
Um, cause I don't like the idea of, wow, big money coming in, taking Ag land for short-term rentals.
See, I would just drop Ag altogether.
Meaning, make it not.
Well, but we have a ton of short-term rentals in Ag outside of LaSalle.
Well, on what stand, like, I'm trying to find on the map, what is, what is Monazuma Canyon?
We've got a bunch of personal camp parts in LaSalle. We don't wanna hurt their families either.
What is Monazuma Canyon?
Monazuma Canyon is right outside of town here, you've never been to Monazuma Canyon?
What is it zoned?
Oh. Like, where are you at?
I, I've been down Monazuma Canyon, I just was wondering what the zoning was, cause I didn't see it.
I believe it is.
I'm just saying, there's lots of, of. The vineyard there and those different, there's, there's a lot of short-term stuff there, and nice short-term stuff.
It's Ag.
I mean, I would compromise and do conditional in recreation support, and then P.
I say we either P it or C it.
All across the board?
Yeah, the mix and match is just. Cause I, cause there's no findings or justification for why this one's conditional and that one's just permitted.
Well, Ag, I think, the fact that there's not infrastructure.
But to build anything, they have to hold it.
Plan to encourage development and.
Can I make an argument? Just, just my, and I'll just use Monazuma Canyon. And, and even my long-term rental that I built, it's a hundred percent off-grid, like. Monazuma Canyon's off-grid, so there's those cliff dwellings, like the home in the cliff.
Yeah.
They're not power, people love them, people love to stay there, I think they're perfect.
So make them a C, so make them a C. Just to make sure that, since it's so remote, and it is sensitive area, archaeologically, all of that, make it a C so that they have to meet the conditions.
I'm just not sure that we can uphold that though, like, we can't force me to do an ARC study.
Um, well, not necessarily that, but they could get their, I mean, depending on where they are. There's, there'll be backlash if there is damage anyway from the community, I'm sure. But, um, but still a C, when it, it's more sensitive, it's more remote, make it a C.
I think remote's the big word there.
You don't think it's.
On your conditions.
Well, on the conditions, if you're way in the hell out there doing an overnight rental, there are some things we wanna say.
Yeah, just like with Bendy.
That, that would be a good reason for the CPBC.
What, oh, this is treading.
Ag and Rec support are gonna be.
What if we make it a.
Some regulations.
What if we make it permitted across the board, and the business license addresses those stipulations?
Perfect then.
So that they don't have to come see us, they apply for a business license, business license looks, looks at their application and says, okay. I don't know yet, I'm trying to hire in a code enforcement officer, and they keep pushing the budget hearing off till whenever, or never. There's some things right now. I would like, I would like Nate to be our code enforcement officer.
But it takes the public out of it by doing it that way, which I don't like, I think there needs.
The public's already out of it.
What do you mean they're out of?
Use, you get impact.
Yeah.
But.
But who has ever shown up for a?
But the options there.
We've had a lot of people show up for conditional uses through the last twelve years.
To fight against it.
Argue, yeah, why they shouldn't have it.
I mean.
Curtis Wells?
This is where we do a pill process. And if we, we, I think we need to decide if it, if this is a land use issue. Then it should be under us, if it is not a land use issue, if it's, if it's a requirement for business license. Then it needs to be under that department.
Yeah, and that's why I'm saying that CPBC, because the two Cs are.
What are you spelling out?
Agriculture is C, and then community commercial and res- in, uh, in multi-use is BP. And then the last new weird one.
Recreation.
Is C.
Is C, I like that, I could do CPBC.
If you say pull a building permit, they have to have septic, I mean, that, that's already covered, I think we're being redundant.
I'm kinda.
I mean, most of your, uh, conditional use permits are stupid, I mean, they really are.
I don't wanna do this really, this is more paperwork.
We copy and paste everything that we do on them.
Well, think about how many more we're gonna can cut down on by doing two, those two Ps, right?
But I think, but I think when it comes to safety and, and remote areas like that, where, with water and.
It is a land use issue?
Yes, it is. That's why I think it should be CPBC.
Okay, so you want it conditional in Ag and Rec?
Yes.
And you want it permitted in multi-use? But look at how much multi-use we have out there in the wide, wide world.
Yeah, what's wrong with that, don't you worry?
I'm just saying, multi-use should be with Ag.
All those weird dots.
Oh, I see, because there's large parcels.
Also way out, all over.
Okay.
No.
So you're saying permitted in community commercial?
The logic.
Almost talked about Ps.
There's no, that's when like, we're, if we're. It's hard to draw, well, it's only conditional here because your findings of fact are all over the place. So we either, I think we either make all the zones conditional, or make all the zones permitted, and let the business license. Before they get a business license, they have to go through the checklist. And I would be fine getting this off my desk and just making it permitted.
Sounds good.
No, then I'd go back to all Cs, if, if those are the alternate.
Then the business license says until you have these things.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm with Cody on this one, I'm in.
I mean, I just look like all the, the multi-use, but then I even look around Blanding, I'm like, I own this right here, I mean. Then, it's Ag. The other is multi-use, I mean, I don't know, I mean.
You can't make the business licensing, the planning and zoning commissioner remember, they have their role, you have your role.
Right.
We're saying, the requirements for obtaining a business license for a short-term rental, we need to make that application. Like, it doesn't exist yet, and, and in that application.
The county needs to make an application, not planning and zoning.
Cause what we're saying is the stipulations we have are not a land use issue. The stipulations we have are. Do they have fire extinguishers and?
All fire code and building code.
It's, it's under more building code. Um, there might be some stipulations about educating people or having information if they're way far out.
Signage.
Your fire marshal should be doing an inspection on them.
Don't say that right now, Lloyd.
Kidding, stop, fire guy.
Uh, is accountability issue around here?
So, so, do we wanna make it permitted?
Yes, yes, yes.
What specifically now, are?
So, wherever there's a C, we're making it a P.
Uh, no.
So the Ps one?
We're going all Ps.
We're going all Ps where there's Cs.
Where are you at, Lloyd?
Uh, I, I would like it conditional and residential.
And Ps everywhere.
It's not permitted in residential at all.
Can we get a week to sleep on us maybe?
You have till Friday.
It's ten o'clock.
Yeah, I think it's too late to make a snap decision on such an important.
Okay, for now, it sounds like we want Ps, generally speaking. So I am going to change it to Ps, it will be in red. And bold, so that you can find it, sleep on it.
Remember, you want this to pass, right?
I think that will pass way easier, if you want the truth. It just means we are opening up a free-for-all.
Which, I don't know.
Okay.
I mean, when is the, the, the meeting?
So I am meeting with our, I'm meeting with our attorney Wednesday and Friday. The.
This week, Wednesday and Friday?
This week, so I should have the final, final stuff out with any adjustments made in bold red. Anything that I can or cannot control, I'll send you in an email, like, we updated this due to this, I can't do anything about this. Um, we're gonna have to rely on email, I think it's Christmas next week, and then New Year's, and then we vote. So, if you have any grammatical issues or any concerns, we can talk about it. Um, through email, and then I'll publish out those comments, so that they're open.
And then we'll get like a reminder of our meeting the thirty first, whatever.
So, our next meeting, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn us.
Okay, adjourn.
And then I have a few more things to say.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
I second it.
A motion and a second all in favor?
Alright.
Hi.
Alright, thanks guys, okay.